That's right, Councilman Vera.
Thank you. Yes, sir. I wanted to introduce to my interim aide Darsh Saravana. They are a USF Rising Senior and Environmental Science major. So Darsh, if you want to just come up and just introduce yourself and say a few words. So Brandon, my wonderful aide is going to be out for about a month, spending time with her wonderful family, and Darsh is going to be covering, so I just wanted to introduce Darsh to City Council and folks. If you want to briefly say hi.
Yeah. Hey, everyone. My name is Darsh. I use they/them pronouns, and I'm honored to serve as a temporary aide to Councilman Vera, and this is my first time working in government, and I'm so excited to, you know, have you guys to be the first ones to kickstart my career in public policy. So I just want to say thank you so much.
What do you major in?
Environmental Science and Policy. Yes, I hope to go into like food justice, food sovereignty, that sort of work in government.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah.
Now arrest this woman.
Thank you, Darsh. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, so this is item number sixty-nine.
Chief? Sure. Good afternoon, Council, and thank you for the opportunity and the time certain. We do appreciate that as well. Today, I'm proud to present the outcomes and future opportunities guided by our Public Safety Master Plan, which is a blueprint for progress that ensures that we don't just respond to the present, but we continue to actively shape the future of public safety in Tampa and across the nation. So real quick today, I'll highlight a few things. We'll talk about how we achieve our historic crime reductions, including violent crime offenses and non-fatal shootings. We'll talk about how our agency is the first agency, big-sized agency in the nation to pilot AI, including Policy Chat, we'll go into a little bit later, and Language Assistance Translation. We'll look into our future training with our virtual reality training, and we'll talk about the expansion of our community initiatives, our PAL, our TPD Cares Grant, our Community Shoe Closet. And we will also announce here today a new recruitment bonus that we're doing for out-of-state officers, and an increase in our police recruit scholarship pay, and also our comprehensive wellness program. So with the strong public support and city leadership, Tampa Police has shown that we're not only one of the safest major cities our size, we are one of the most forward-thinking and community-connected as well. This report here will celebrate those heroic efforts of our officers, our strategic process, our progress, and our vision looking forward. So moving on to the next slide. As you all know, last year was a year of resiliency for our entire community and our officers as well. We had answered over fifteen thousand calls and performed over a hundred and fifty rescues and distributed thousands of meals and water bottles, and that's while our officers were impacted themselves directly. You may be aware, after the first storm, we had eleven officers to lose their homes, but yet still came in here to answer the call for the community, which is something that is not easy to do. People across the nation don't have officers that have the dedication and perseverance and commitment to the community like Tampa does. In addition, in our annual report, we also highlighted our resiliency here in our crime reduction. You may recall from last year, we talked about a new program we got called Spider Tech, and it sends surveys out to officers, to the calls that the officers go to, and we were proud to get a four-point-five rating out of five stars, which is, to me, unbelievable. I mean, sometimes when I see these, I'm just amazed at people taking the time out to write positive things about our officers and the things that they do to help. So moving into the next slide is crime reduction. The decline in total crime was fourteen point eight percent. Our violent crime last year was down eight point four, which outpaced the national average. Tampa's reduction in violent crime was almost nearly double the national average. Our non-fatal shootings decreased by twenty-seven percent, and our homicides last year dropped by ten percent. And the first quarter of this year, they're down forty percent. If you look at the two years and combined, from twenty-two to twenty-four, we had a fifteen percent decrease in overall violent crime and nearly a thirty percent decrease in violent crime involving a firearm. And this is due to the results of our hard-working officers out there. They have an unprecedented sense of urgency, which you've seen in many of our Officer of the Month ceremonies highlighting that, and our community engagement, and also valuable tools, like was discussed earlier, ShotSpotter really helps our officers in accomplishing the mission of reducing crime and improving the quality of life. Property crime was also down last year, almost seventeen percent, and we had almost a twenty-eight percent drop in auto burglaries and a twenty-five percent reduction of firearms stolen from vehicles, and that's huge, because people are listening. We're out there talking, and we're saying, "Don't leave your gun in your car. Don't leave your car unlocked," and it's happening, because twenty-five percent less firearms were stolen last year out of cars compared to 2023. Firearms recovered last year. We still did recover almost seventeen hundred firearms in 2024, and the first quarter of this year, I talked about our homicides being down forty percent. Our total violent crime was down twenty-two percent, and when we're looking at a major city chief survey from across the nation, the first quarter, the average was fourteen percent. So again, we are above the national average in reducing our violent crime. One of the other initiatives that really assists us with our gun crimes was Project Locked and Unloaded. We expanded this program last year to add in four library locations where anybody can walk up and get a gun lock free, no questions asked, and that made a huge dividend. We gave out almost three hundred gun locks, which was something that exceeded our expectations. And I would like to hand this portion of the presentation over to Assistant Chief Owen, who will go into our community policing.
Good afternoon, Council. As you all know, Deputy Chief Johnson retired earlier this year. After his retirement, we expanded our community outreach to a Fuel Bureau under Major Fruit and Captain Hill. They've done an outstanding job in raising TPD's vision for community engagement and expanding our programs. The Community Shoe Closet has handed out a hundred and thirty-seven pairs of shoes to family in need. It originally started with just the Rich House and PAL. They are now in all three of our districts as well. So our youth programs, the Police Athletic League, we have served over five hundred kids in after-school programs, sports and summer programs, to include STEM and reading. We partnered with the Tampa Bay Lighten for field hockey. They actually left the equipment so we can carry that program on in the future. Tampa Bay Buccaneers and the Big Brothers, Big Sisters are offering mentoring for us. Donations helped us fund a seven-on-seven travel league for high school football. During the school year, we offered golf for the first time at First Tee through a partnership with them. We have one hundred kids signed up for a fishing clinic this Saturday. They will receive fishing poles, tackle boxes, and training from several local fishing guides, Fish and Wildlife, and TPD officers. Starting this summer, we will offer a middle school basketball league. We received a grant through USA Football for summer training. Working on partnering with Pop Warner Tackle Football for the thirteen-year program. We also offer Minecraft coding. It'll be the first time offered this summer, and we currently have a hundred and eighty kids signed up for our summer programs. In addition, we partnered with Parks and Rec to expand the Stay and Play Program, and we received a grant of $280,000 to assist with that and the safety outreach. And thanks to the suggestion of Councilwoman Hurtak, we offered midnight basketball the week of spring break. We are planning to carry that on this summer as well. The Police Explorers participated in a hundred and sixty-five events across the city and placed fifth in a statewide competition. We had a third-place finish in Sharp Shooter. The female physical agility test was a first-place finish. Bicycle operations, we took first and second place. Male bicycle operations, we took first and second place. Third place in color guard. Third place in crime scene scenario, and third place in traffic stop scenarios. A great job by our youth. Shielding our teams continues as in years past, including resume building, interview skills, and concludes with a job fair. TPD Cares. In previous years, we had offered thirty-five thousand to eight organizations. This year, we were able to increase that to forty-five thousand and ten organizations. We have done that through forfeiture funds that were taken through illegal activities. Our recruiting. As the chief mentioned, we have increased our base pay for police recruits from nineteen dollars an hour to thirty dollars an hour. It helps us maintain our competitive edge. We partnered with the Skills Bridge Program that helps us retain folks coming out of military service. They're allotted three months of time while they're still engaged in their military service contract to come out into the civilian world and work with organizations and find that job that they want. We have actually put our first recruit through the Police Academy through that program. We have fourteen officers entering field training and twenty-four new recruits entering the academy this month. We recently selected thirty-six new officers for hire July seventh. That puts TPD at the five percent vacancy rate, while the national average is ten percent per a recent major city chief's report. So our quality assurance. The Tampa Police Department provides itself in relationships, as it has with the community. One way we provide the best services to the community is to ensure that we are proactive with our quality assurance. Our training standards and expectations are that officers are to use the least amount of force necessary in response to resistance. Thanks to continued and updated training, we have had an eleven percent decrease in the use of force and a seventeen point four percent increase in use of de-escalation techniques. This year, our officers have already responded to five hundred and thirteen thousand calls for service. That is a one-point-six percent increase in overall calls for service and a seven percent increase in self-initiated calls. An additional area of quality assurance is our evidence storage and evidence processing. We are currently in the final stages of permitting for the Howard Avenue Annex that is being built to replace the storage area we formerly called the impound lot. We will store high-value and vehicles needed for evidence at the Howard Avenue Annex, but this location is primarily being built to ensure a chain of custody and security of evidence. Our wellness programs. The Tampa Police Department is also working on wellness initiatives, not only for our employees, but for the community. With the assistance of a federal grant, we successfully launched the Connect and Protect Program with our Crisis Intervention Dispatch Program. We have received more than four hundred and fifty calls this year that were handled by the crisis dispatchers, resulting in two hundred and sixteen people receiving diversionary services, and an additional one thousand fifty-four resulted in resources being dispatched. The Tampa Police Department also has a behavioral health unit that works as a co-responder model, one officer and one licensed clinician, working as a two-person response team. Last year, we had more than sixty thousand calls for service and addressed mental health concerns. The Behavioral Health Unit addressed the needs of four hundred and seventy community members. Some of them generated more than one call for service, resulting in the BHU managing safety plans assisting with the obtaining of medication and arranging for transportation for services. In April alone, TPD handled a hundred and one follow-up calls for service and responded to eighty-four live calls. These are active calls for service with community members in distress. Behavioral Health Unit also successfully relocated four individuals. Nineteen were successfully paired with service providers, and thirty others were receiving follow-up service, were successfully closed out, no longer needing police intervention. Internally, we have partnered with Dr. Allison Agliotta to provide additional wellness resources for our officers individually and with their significant other. This service is confidential and provides support for officers' wellness, physical, spiritual, and financial wellness. The services have been an overwhelming success with our officers, and our requests for services
So as you can see here, crime reduction, technology advancements, things that we're doing in technology is on the cutting edge of helping our officers. And smartphones is something we received the grant for last year. That's actually being deployed now out into the field, and the technology that's on there to assist the officers is pretty much short of amazing. One of the things that we're piloting is called Policy Chat. It basically uses a similar feature like if you were to do a Google search, and the Google search, when you know when you come up, it'll come back with an AI response. Well, what this does is it comes up with an AI response just on our policies, on our SOPs, MORs, and legal bulletins, so it helps the officers search our policies and get responses much quicker, and that's something that we're piloting out now, which is a great tool that's out there to assist them. In addition to that, looking at other options to basically make their jobs easier. One of the things we did is our community-oriented policing, our Signal Eighty-sevens, which is our basically meetings where we get the community together, and we just had one of those last week, and we have a lot of great feedback on those meetings in the community. And I think Councilwoman Henderson, you might have came to that one at Reagan Center.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, thank you for showing up. And as far as quality assurance, we talked about the ICAT training, and that's something that we're leading the edge on. It's something that our agency has been doing, but we continue to do it as a refresher, using the curriculum from the Police Executive Research Forum, and we're adding in virtual reality headsets to even further augment this. Through our Axon Agreement, we got forty-one headsets, and those headsets are for the officers to do TASER-10 training and also de-escalation training. So we are on the cutting edge with that as well. The other thing is our wellness and physical fitness training. That's something that we take near and dear. If we don't take care of ourselves, how can we take care of the community? So we're always looking at ways to expand those programs. So basically, to close this all out, I am very proud to be the chief of this police department and all of our officers. The work that they're doing is making a huge difference in our community, and it's being noticed across the nation. So it's our honor to present this, and we'll be able to answer any questions you all have.
Thank you, Chief. Councilman Vera, it's your item.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for a great presentation, as always. You know, I always, I saw a lot of pictures of Sharif, one of y'all's officers who's from New York City NYPD, and Sharif is just, he's a rising star in Tampa Police Department. He's a good guy, and I'm glad to see that he's such a big part of TPD. So thank you, guys, for your presentation. You know, this is all about our growing Tampa and making sure that we continue to meet the needs of our growing Tampa whenever it comes to public safety, which is obviously always issue number one, whether it's for Tampa Police Department or whether it's for Tampa Fire Rescue. It's always a big deal. You know, we're post-COVID Tampa, Tampa Bay Area, State of Florida, grown tremendously, and so, you know, we do this to always make sure that we're meeting those needs as we continue to grow. Y'all highlighted, on, in my opinion, all the important points and so many different things. You know, we always got to look at hiring more police officers. I think that's, and obviously, I think everybody agrees with that, and that making sure that as we grow as a city, that we're going to have officers who are responsive to all the needs of all parts of our city of Tampa. The Mental Health Unit, I'm glad that y'all talked about that. Such a tremendous, one of the really good things that our city did, I think, after 2020, the murder of George Floyd, was looking at these mental health units. I'd love to see them grow and grow and grow continually, because so many, and again, y'all know better than I do, you're not going to have a politician and a lawyer lecture you on policing, but so many crimes and calls do a deal with mental health issues. And so that's certainly something that's important. Community policing, something that, you know, was really big in the 1990s, and that I see more and more of a return to, which is making sure that officers are a part of their community and so forth. I'd love to see something in the future with the city of Tampa. I don't know if we have this, but if, or we can encourage our police officers through city incentives, maybe something exists, I don't know, to live within city limits as encouragement, not mandate, obviously. We don't want that. The big issue, though, of course, is how we pay for all these things, which is, you know, I say we need more cops. They say that expand the mental health unit, different things. Community policing obviously costs a lot of money. I'd love to see a substation one day in New Tampa. You know, District Two supports all of District Seven. Busch Gardens is mighty far away from Grand Hampton and Corey Lake Isles, and I've always said that I think that's a good thing, but how do we pay for these things? You look at our city of Tampa budget, I've always believed, and I motioned for it two years ago, and I'll say it again and again and again, that we do need a dedicated public safety revenue source here in the city of Tampa that can go directly to things like building more fire stations, hiring more police officers, and building that public safety infrastructure that we need here in the city of Tampa. I know it's not a popular thing to say in terms of taxes, but it is what it is. I think it's important. I would be remiss if I also didn't mention with regards to the news, and I know some things that y'all are very passionate about, which is making sure that every Tampango, no matter who they are, no matter what god they worship, and so forth, feels safe. And after the news that we've seen a few days ago in Boulder, Colorado, it happened in Washington, DC, at the attack at the, what was the Jewish museum? It was called there, Jewish Capitol Museum in Washington, DC, we're hearing a lot from our American Jewish constituents on they're feeling safe. And I know that there is great and tremendous trust in what Tampa Police Department does, but I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about that, and I think the duty that we all have to make sure that in this very acute time, that when it comes to all prejudice and hate, but particularly in this instance with antisemitism, that our constituents feel heard and protected and whatnot, and again, things that y'all always do a great job on. Also, wanted to salute you guys on victims of crime and outrage. Later today, we're going to be voting on an item on renaming a park after the late Harrison Boone Stoppel. You know, in a lot of these cases, you guys are there. Police officers wear many hats, and one of the hats that I think that the men and women of police or of law enforcement often wear is of counselor, secular minister, whatever you want to call it, in dealing with people who are mourning and grieving, and you guys always do a great job on that, I think, and I think it's incumbent on all of us. So, you know, again, this is something that we want to do, because our city is one that supports law enforcement. We do, and we want to continue to see that as we grow as a city, that we have that growth in law enforcement, because that's something that people want and support. So I will stop talking right now and not run out my time. Thank you.
I was going to say, you know, we don't have to talk until the end. Counselwoman Henderson.
Thank you, Chair. I just admire the work that's being done by our police department. I really appreciate it. It's basically what I want to say, the, also the recruitment level, the action plan, in terms of increasing minority police officers within the city of Tampa, I'm glad to see that there's a strategy to focus on that, particularly at HBCUs. I know that can be still tough down the line trying to, you know, bring people into law enforcement. The other thing that I recognize is our Explorer Program. One of my students, when I saw him at Memorial in a police uniform, like a real uniform, not the Explorer uniform, I just couldn't believe it. It was so exciting, along with Emmanuel, who's pictured today. So I know that it's possible, our youth programs, even through the sports, being connected to the police officers in that way, in an informal way, can still bring about recruitment. We're always recruiting and keeping fresh eyes on even our young people. So I just see those opportunities there, because there are two people, you know, that are displayed in your PowerPoint that's representative of our youth programs that are now sworn police officers. Other than that, I'll just leave it at that. Great job. I'm glad that you're still proud to serve our city as our chief, and congratulations on all that you all do. This outweighs the sad days, because I know there's tough days as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselwoman Hurtak.
Thank you. I really appreciate all the focus and intensity on youth, on diversion, on helping with behavioral unit. All of this is really exciting. Congratulations, and what we're seeing, the numbers are, is that it works. And so I just really love that, and I do hope that we can find more money for the Behavioral Health Unit, because it seems like those numbers are pretty high, and only have three or four dedicated health professionals. Seems like we might need some more in the future. But I also want to really commend you. Your department specifically does a phenomenal job with grants and getting grants to fund a lot of this stuff, so just want to say thank you for that. It's really exciting. What a wonderful presentation today.
Thank you. Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Chief, you, and to your whole staff that's under you, and to every police officer in the city of Tampa. It's an honor to be here and see what you folks have done. However, when you look around in the why and how and who does it, it's almost impossible, because nowadays, when you look at any screen on anything, on the phone, on TV, on whatever you're watching at, there's always violence of some sort, and they show you things throughout the country, not only United States, but other countries, that'll have the copycat or whatever you want to call it, that they get their idealism about doing something and blowing up something to have their name forever instilled in somewhere. I don't know where. But these are the things that you guys are really, ladies and gentlemen of your force, have really looked after and continue to do that, because the unknown is also the unexpected, and you can never be prepared enough, and you folks have done a yeoman's job in being as prepared as you can, and it also verifies that, I don't know how many officers are retiring, but there's a lot of folks that have been doing the police department twenty-five and thirty years, so you also have to be recruiting. It's like planting flowers, making them grow, and then you've got to plant another acre of flowers, because those have left already. So it's a yeoman's job that you have to do. You have to be a psychiatrist. You have to be a police officer. You have to have the street knowledge. You have to have the book knowledge. You have to have the "don't touch me" knowledge. You have to have so many things a day to be a police officer, and I just want to congratulate you for all the citizens in the city of Tampa for the job you all are doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the working men and women in police and public safety. It's incredibly important what you all do. As I said this morning, nothing in our city can work if we have a high crime rate. And when we, when I started anyway, some of us started at different times. When I started council in 2019, we saw a period from 2018 to about 2021 where the violent crime rate spiked, and anybody who wants to see it can go to the FBI Crime Statistics website. But hats off to Mayor Castor and Chief of Staff Bennett, who changed the direction and brought that violent crime rate down. And so we've had now And so we've had now three or four years of low violent crime rates, and as you said, one of the best in the country. And it's, it's partly because of the policies, direction, management, Chief, Dr. Chief Burkhart being there as well, but the hardworking men and women in the team. And some of the ideas you mentioned were collaborative ideas that, that we on council worked on. One thing I want to say also though is that during the last election, it's only two years ago, some desperate politicians and others tried to politicize the police, and I, I was against it then. I think that it's, it, that the, that we should never put police officers in the way of, of political campaigns and political fights. We all work collaboratively to try to help the police. Councilmember Herchak and I in particular had this wave of emails and campaign stuff saying we're anti-police. Now, Councilmember Herchak has probably written in, in police cards more than any of us. And if there's anything that the rest of us need to do to learn more about what you all do every day and how you put your lives on the line, we'd love to, to, to participate and learn, learn more about what you do. And the last thing I say, I'm going to say is the, is that whatever any kind of crazy politicians say, I'm going to make sure that I continue to support the police and, and make sure that, that you are able to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to add on that, anybody that wants to learn more about us, we do our Citizens Academy in the fall and in the spring. The fall, we'll be advertising soon. I would encourage anybody to sign up for the Citizens Academy. And also just a point of clarification on the crime reduction. Twenty, last 22 years, the city of Tampa's down 76% in crime. The nation saw a spike in violent crime during COVID because the criminal justice system shut down, but the spike, slight little nudge Tampa had was nowhere near the rest of the nation. And we are fortunate because of the community that we have and the officers that we have to have record historic low crime.
I volunteer to do that if I could, if I could be the one tasing someone.
Yeah.
And can I pick the person?
You don't have to get tased. I don't get tased.
I want to pick the person. I get to, I don't want to taze somebody.
You have to go to the Citizens Academy.
Councilman Metiscalko.
Thank you for that great presentation, and, and you focused on a lot of the positivity, the community policing, engagement with the youth. There's a lot of good in Tampa. You know, we get, we get a lot of complaints, we hear a lot from the community, but it's nice to see the positive impact that's being done. And thank you to you, Chief. You're always accessible, you always answer, or you call first many times. And you mentioned the Citizens Academy. If anybody wishes to do that, it's a wonderful opportunity. I did it years ago, and I did not get tased, I chose not to. But it's a, it's a great experience to see what happens behind the scenes, and you get a greater appreciation. So thank you for that wonderful report, and thank you for your leadership and your whole team.
Councilwoman Herch, Henderson.
Yeah, I just, remember I was going to ride along with you, but it was 2:00 in the morning and you didn't call to wake me up, remember? And I slept through it. Chief Burkhart, you remember that?
If that's the way you say it.
Yeah, so I got to get back on your list.
Okay.
Well, one, thank you for what you're doing for the city and keeping us safe, for you and everyone else that works and wears the uniform as a first responder. And at the first meeting I had with you, a lot of it, we talked about PAL, Police Athletic League, and the involvement with our youth. And so thank you for continuing to, you know, walk that walk and talk that talk, and being true to your, the first words you ever, you ever uttered to me in our very first meeting. I appreciate you keep, keeping that up and, and working all the way through that program, because I think it's invaluable. And the people that'll be sitting here 20 years from now, as lower crime rates, we, it would be because of those type of programs. So they'll be able to thank you and, and your officers that are working with these young people today for reducing future crimes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So our next item is, this will be item number 71. The staff brought an update on all efforts that have been done to extract the process for 2025 ribbon cutting, opening in 2027 of Station 24. Chief Tripp.
Good afternoon, Council. Chief Tripp here, Tampa Fire Rescue Chief, and I do have my project manager that should be online, and then we had a little technical difficulty. So Ken, are you available?
I am here, Chief.
Okay. All right, so I want to introduce Ken Guyot. He's actually was the individual that was selected to be the project manager for, for this project, which is the building of Fire Station 24. And of course, we've been working every week, he meet with us on weekly basis, and of course, we've been having multiple meetings. And he's here to answer any questions. We have been reviewing the site plan as well as the layout for the project as far as the building itself, and of course, doing everything we can, and he can give you more information as far as some of the areas that we're looking into to try to see how we can, when I say decrease, but increase the, the start date as opposed to decreasing the time that we have currently. Ken, I'll let you start.
Sure. Thanks, Chief, and thanks, Councilors. Glad to be here. And just want to say real quick, some of the current status of the project as we currently said today. So some of the tasks that have been completed, we've completed the project budget confirmation, the existing site conditions with the survey and the analysis of the site has been complete as well. We've worked on the space needs assessment, which is essentially the programming of the space, the, the needs of the fire department and what's going to be incorporated into the plans. We've seen some of the architects' conceptual floor plans, that we've done some review, and that's going to be ongoing. We're anticipating a pre-designed package, criteria package to be completed on or about the 30th of July, which will lead us into schematic design shot starting shortly thereafter. Currently, the schedule's looking at construction start date of 25 September of 2026. We're going to continue to work on compressing the design schedule to ensure that we get an earlier construction start date if at all possible. And in addition, we are also going to be making sure that we're working with the design build team to look at and identify any sort of building methods or materials such as tilt wall or precast or anything else that we can do to compress the construction schedule as well, to move up that date as much as possible. Currently, the construction completion is shown at 15 December of 2027, and obviously we want to make sure that we get that pulled back. So that's currently where we stand, and we're happy to answer any question you may have.
Thank you, Chief Tripp. I appreciate the fact that you got a project manager on this. I'm sure it's going to really help get, push this thing along, so congratulations on that. Councilman Viera, you had?
Yeah, thank you. So before I start, what are we looking at? Because last time I heard, it was doing a groundbreaking in March of 2026, right? And did you say September of '25 we're looking at groundbreaking?
Yeah, that's what he said.
That's correct.
Okay, great, yeah, okay, good. And?
No, September 2026, excuse me, September 2026, we're looking at a groundbreaking. Construction's starting.
How in the, how in the world can we not start construction on that for another year and four months? I'm?
That's what we're trying to push to find out. We, we've, again, we've only been involved for about a little less than a month, and we are currently working with the design team. There was a current, a contract already established before we came on board that established dates of completion for the design phase and the construction phase. So we're kind of working against that contract to try to compress those dates and push the design team to move those dates up in the design phase as well as construction phase. So our anticipation is that we're going to pull that back as quickly as we can and as much as we can to get more in line with that March of 2025, 2026, excuse me, construction groundbreaking date.
This is what?
I don't know.
Oh, go ahead, Chief.
I just want to say one thing. I don't know if our contract is admin is on here, if Richard have any input, because I do remember initially coming from contract admin that we was trying to push for March of '26, but as he stated, as far as the design build, as far as that contract and, you know, individual put in, I don't know what happened.
Yeah.
March, September.
Yes, ma'am, and thank you. And I got to tell you, I'm going to be very blunt, I am extremely distressed over that. We were told March of 2026 for groundbreaking, and we did motions so that we could hurry on that, and now we're being told September of 2026 for groundbreaking? I do not understand it. I mean, I, I am very, very frustrated over this. I'll withhold my words to a degree, but we were talking about March of 2026, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm going off of recollection, for groundbreaking, and we were pushing for October of 2025 for groundbreaking. We passed a design on this and the budget in 2023, and it's going to take three and a half years to get to groundbreaking. Like, my question is, like, to, to everybody there, and, and I, there are certain things that are purview of the chief, certain things that are in the purview of, of contract administration or, or Mr., and please correct me if I'm mispronouncing your name, Sir, Mr. Guyet, but tell me how that makes sense and how in the world we got here. We're dealing with a North Tampa community that had Station 13, that was the busiest station in Tampa, the 54th busiest station in the United States of America. We give them some relief through Station 25, we get that done quickly, and now it's going to take us three and a half years to get from passing design to doing it groundbreaking? Explain to me how that makes sense, because from the way I see it, this simple thinking person, hear me, I don't see how that makes sense.
Is, is there somebody from contract administration online? No?
There should be.
If anybody's from contract administration listening, now's your time to log in. Okay. Councilman Miranda.
Well, I understand, and I understand the frustration Councilmember Viera has. We were told, and Mr. Viera worked so hard on, on working to that, that goal, now that goal has sort of disappeared in, in the air. So I think there's some explanation that is due to Mr. Viera and the Council as to why. That's what he's asking.
Councilwoman Herchak.
I agree, and I mean, I would so, go so far as to say that, that nothing else should break ground until this is done.
Yeah?
I mean, I, I, I'm not going to approve any more money for anything, building wise, until this gets done. Because this is, that's ridiculous. That is absolutely ridiculous. There's no reason we can't start building a fire station for another 16 months. That, I mean, there's just, that makes absolutely no sense. I, I completely agree with Councilman Viera, so I, yeah, I won't support any type of building of city facilities until this is done. I just can't do it.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, if you all, I agree, it is ridiculous. Councilmember Viera started pushing this like five, six years ago, and we thought it was all done, we allocated the money, nothing happened. It's just, you know, we talk about slow walking, that's what this is. And it's not, it's not the staff person's fault, the administration's not setting it, this is a priority. And, and what, what, it's not about a station, it's about the, the safety of, of the people of this community. They need, we need facilities to protect our firefighters and public safety people, we need resources to be able to protect the public. But if you all make a motion to put a moratorium on new building or funding for new buildings until this starts, I'm happy to support it, I'll definitely vote for it. We had the same problem with Tampa Union Station, it took five years of making motions every year, and now finally it's starting, and, and it's just?
Do you want to make a motion?
I don't know exactly what you were going to say, what kind of motion? More, that, that, well, if you all think of the language, I'm happy to make the motion or support it.
What is the motion? I was, I was?
No, I was just saying?
Hold on, hold on, hold on a second, this is still discussion, so. Can I suggest, I'll let, Councilman Viera speak before we do this, but can we continue this item for like an hour and see if we can get somebody from contract administration on to, to get this answered? So I'm going to, I'm going to let Councilman Viera have the last word of this discussion, and then I'd make a motion to, I have, I would entertain a motion from someone in council to continue this item till, for, for one hour.
So until then?
Okay, so?
Well, except that we have all these?
So, so, okay, I heard Councilman Miranda said yes, a motion to defer this till, so it's 2:00, and I'll say 3:00, let's say 3:00, let's say 3:00, and then we can always pivot that. Till 3:00, we give them a time certain. A second from Councilwoman Henderson, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Viera, would you like to close this out?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I mean, again, for me, I'm just, I'm going to do, I'm just going to give you all objective facts, right? We passed this in 2023 for design. Then we do a vote immediately after that, in early 2024, for bonding, for Station 24 as well as for fleet maintenance. City Council puts forth the funding mechanism for the construction. That was in, in probably the early 2024. Here we are, a year and a half later, and we are just being told that we have another year and a half to begin on this project for groundbreaking. That is unacceptable. So I do want someone from contract administration here. I mean, that is unacceptable, and I am, and I would entertain also a motion for the following week, whenever we have city council, to ask the Chief of Staff and representatives from the administration to come and to give us a detailed explanation, and the motion should be as follows, what the hell happened? That's what the motion should be, because we got to find out what the hell happened, because people want answers for this. So again, wherever it falls, I want answers, because this is unacceptable, unacceptable. Thank you.
So we had said that, that Councilman Viera was going to have the last word of that. I know Councilman Carlson, now Councilman Randall wants to speak, can we wait till 3:00 to hear that?
I want to, I just want to make a comment on that.
Okay, Councilman Carlson.
This is on?
Easy access.
Yeah. This is, this is on the prior, I've never used this, so I don't know how to, how to use that wolf.
You just leave it there, it should pop up.
It should automatically pop.
We were talking about violent crime statistics a minute ago, and, on the, on the police side, and?
Can we get, can we get the wolf up, please? Wolf.
Yeah, so I happened to print this out, or do a screenshot of it a few days ago. This is the, is it back up?
Yes.
This is the FBI, anybody can, you find this, go to the FBI crime statistics website and just pull up city of Tampa, and these are, this is data reported by TPD, not by, not done independently by the FBI, but what you can see is this, this, is this big spike, and you see it go up and down, but the big spike started in sometime in 2018 and then ended about 2020, 2021.
Councilman Carlson, does this have to do with the fire station?
Huh?
Does this have to do with the fire station?
No, I was just showing the violent crime rate, I wanted?
Yeah, well, we're talking about the fire station now.
I, I, okay, I thought, I'm just going to circulate.
Bring that back to new, in new business. Councilman Miranda, did you want to say something?
No, I just, I, I'm not in disapproval with what Mr. Viera said, that I would take the word hell out, I don't want to start a war.
Oh, I'm joking.
I, I, I thought, I thought that was just a?
Well, yeah.
I'm joking.
Use another word, like, what happened?
Gang got out of my cell.
Okay, so we are going to, Chief Tripp, if you're still on, we're going to continue this item to 3:00. If you could work the phones in your end to make sure that we have the subject matter experts available to answer those questions, I would greatly appreciate it, and we'll see you approximately 3:00 in council time, which you know could give or take an hour. Okay, with that being said, I, we, I did not ask for if there was anybody in the public that wished to have this council reconsider legislative matters. Hearing none, gone, okay. We are going to move on with the agenda once I find my place. Okay, so we are now at our 10:00 AM public hearings. It is 2:00, we are only four hours behind. We're going to start, this is a non-quasi judicial, so we don't need to swear anybody, and we're going to do item 45.
Move to open on public hearing?
We need to move, thank you, Mr. Chairman, our Councilman Metiscalko. We have moved a motion to open public hearings, a second from Councilman Miranda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, item number 45, who's going to present? This is the second readings, by the way.
Good afternoon, Council, Emma Gregory, Legal Department. As you said, Chair, this is the second reading of a petition to amend the boundaries of the Encore CDD. The first reading was on May 1st, if I'm remembering correctly. Applicant's representative is here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Does the applicant have anything they'd like to say?
Good afternoon, my name is Sarah Sandy with QTAC Rock, representing the petitioner. Address is 107 West College Avenue, Tulsa, Florida. I'm happy to answer any questions. I know previously the council wanted to see a map of it just to get an idea, but unless there's anything additional you'd like me to answer, I'm here to answer questions.
Council, have any questions? Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak to item 45?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Viera, would you like to read item 45?
I read an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption ordinance by the City Council of the City of Tampa, Florida, amending ordinance number 210-129, which established the Encore Community Development District, providing for amendment to change the geographical boundaries of the district pursuant to Section 190 dot 046, providing for all other terms and conditions to remain unchanged, providing for conflicts and severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Bureau, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Please enter your vote. Who's missing?
Everybody pushed their vote. Push it again.
Who are you missing? Got it? Very good, okay, congratulations. Now moving to item 46, who's going to present?
Michelle Van Long Real Estate, number 46 is the second reading of the honorary naming of the New Tampa All Abilities Park for young Mr. Harrison Boone Stoppel, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, very good. Is there anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item? Councilman Viera, I know you just read the last one, but I think it's appropriate for you to read this one as well. I'm sorry, is there a motion to close? We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Yes, sir, and a proud pleasure to do this for a young man who hit his life and just everything really symbolizes what this park is all about, the late Harrison Boone Stoppel. So it's my pleasure and honor to read an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance to the City of Tampa, Florida, approving and naming of the New Tampa All Abilities Playground in Tampa, Florida to honor Harrison Boone Stoppel, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Viera, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Please enter your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Item number 47, yes, ma'am?
Michelle Van Long Real Estate, item number 47 is the second reading of the honorary naming of the proposed park at Markham and Pinewood after Lisa Cheshire.
Okay, is there, anybody would like to, in the public would like to speak to this item?
Move to close.
Good afternoon, Stephanie Poynner. I think this is a grand idea. I'm glad I had it. Thank you.
Okay, we had a motion to close from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from, a second from Councilman Carlson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Carlson, would you like to read item 47?
Sure, thank you, sir, and thank you to Ms. Poynner and the community for recommending this. We gave Lisa accommodation a couple months before she passed and she obviously had a big impact on the community of South Tampa, in particular, South Gandy and throughout the city, in fact. So with pleasure, I move item number 47, file number HN25-14352, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, approving the naming of the proposed park at Markham Street and Pinewood Street in Tampa, Florida, honor Lisa Marie Cheshire, providing effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Please enter your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, we're moving on to item 48.
Good afternoon, Council. Heather Bonds Historic Preservation Specialist. 48 is an ordinance being presented for second reading for a historic preservation tax exemption for 1807 North Morgan Street. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this item?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Councilwoman Henderson, would you like to read item 48?
How do you say Harvey's last name?
Let's vote for that first, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, okay.
Sean Brun. No, it's okay, I don't mind asking. I move file number HTX2513984, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance approving an historic preservation property tax exemption application relative to the restoration, renovation or rehabilitation of certain property owned by Harvey Sean Byrne, trustee located at 1807 North Morgan Street, Tampa, Florida, in the Tampa Heights Historic District, based upon certain findings, providing for notice to the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, providing for severability, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing an effective date.
We have a motion for Councilwoman Henderson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Please record your vote.
And this house is beautiful, by the way. Extremely, it's one block from the bookstore. It's gorgeous.
One more, down to the end.
I voted, mine says yes over here, I'll vote again.
Yeah, everybody. Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the next one, item 49, you're going to present as well?
Yes, sir. Heather Bonds Historic Preservation Specialist. Number 49 is an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption for historic preservation property tax exemption at 1704 West Jettan Avenue. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions? Is there anybody in the council that would like to speak to this item? Nope. Is there a motion to close?
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Hertek, Councilwoman Hertek.
Thank you. File number HTX25-13986, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance approving a historic preservation property tax exemption application relative to the restoration, renovation or rehabilitation of certain property owned by Andrew M. Newman and Ariel E. Peters, located at 1704 West Jettan Avenue, Tampa, Florida, in the Hyde Park Historic District, based upon certain findings, providing for notice to the property appraiser of Hillsborough County, providing for severability, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Oh, Miranda, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Miranda, all those in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, no, this is closed, this is...
Yeah, sorry.
Record your vote, record your vote, sorry, jeez. I'm actually moving ahead to the bottom.
Motion carried unanimously.
I saw you go like that, I didn't hear what you said. Okay, very good, so we're moving on to the 10 o'clock public hearings, which are quasi judicial. You have to be sworn in. If you're planning on testifying or speaking during the quasi judicial, you just stand up, raise your right hand and let our fine clerks swear you in. Yeah, if anybody's planning for the review hearing, do the same thing. Stand up, raise your right hand, let's swear everybody at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, might as well. Y'all are here to talk about anything, anything at all.
Okay, so we are on item number 50. I see Sam Thomas, I can't hear because he's on mute. Still on mute? Madam Clerk? He's unmuted on our end.
I hit the button on my microphone, my apologies, counsel. Sam Thomas Development Coordination.
We'll never talk about that again.
Item number 50 is REZ2502. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at 2701 North Fremont Avenue. The request is to rezone from RS50 to plan development for residential single-family detached. Provisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available if there are any questions.
Councilors, any questions? Is there an applicant? Do we have an applicant for item 50? Is there anybody in the council that would like to speak to item 50?
Move to close.
Second. We have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda to close, a second from Councilwoman Hertek. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Maniscalco, would you like to read item 50?
Thank you very much. I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 2701 North Fremont Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification RS50 residential single-family to PD plan development residential single-family detached, providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with VR being absent at vote.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to item 51. Who's going to present for item 51?
Sorry, counsel. Good afternoon, Counsel, Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number 51 is REZ2521. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at 3210 East Yukon Street. The request is to rezone from residential single-family 60 to residential single-family 50. This is a Euclidean rezoning, therefore there are no site plans. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for staff? Is there an applicant for 51?
Mr. Philip Zong is online, however, we cannot elevate him due to technical issues.
Technical issues, but he can hear us and he can hear, can we hear him at all?
We can hear him.
We have to see his face.
Do we have to see his face for this? Okay, okay, so we're, I guess we'll, since we have the technical issues, we can move forward. Mr. Shelby, is this something that we should move forward with? Okay, okay, very good. We'd like to, is there a motion to close? Or anybody in the public like to speak on item 51? We have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda to close, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, so we left off with, how about Councilwoman Miranda?
Director Chair, item number 51, file number REZ2521. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property Jennifer's vicinity of 3210 East Yukon Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification RS60 residential single-family to RS50 residential single-family, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. Record your vote, please.
Motion carried with Clint Dinnan and Hertak voting no and VR being absent at vote.
Thank you. We move on to item 52. Who's going to present for 52?
Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number 52 is REZ2523. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at 1905 West Sly Avenue. The request is to rezone from residential office to plan development for residential single-family attached uses. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Is there an applicant for 52?
Good afternoon, Counsel. My name is Jorge Camerota. I'm here on behalf of the owners of the property and on behalf of Liz Alons, she's here, but she fell ill, so she will not be able to speak. We're just here for this hearing, to move forward with the adoption of it. If you have any questions, we're able to answer it.
Does Council have any questions? Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to item 52? Is there a motion to close?
Some moved. Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record your vote.
Nope.
Yes, read it.
Read it.
I'd like to move item number 52, file number REZ2523, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of 1905 West Sly Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification RO1 residential office to PD plan development residential single-family detached, providing effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. Now please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with VR being absent at vote.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 53, who's presenting for 53?
Excuse me, Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number 53 is REZ2525. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at 808 North Armenia Avenue and 2402 West State Street. The request is to rezone from PD for place of religious assembly to PD for medical and business professional office use. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available if you have any questions.
Does Council have any questions? Is there an applicant for item 53? Okay, no applicant. Is anybody in the council chambers which speaks to item 53?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Henderson, would you like to read item 53?
Yes, Chair, thank you. I move file number REZ2525, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 808 North Armenia Avenue and 2402 West State Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification PD plan development to PD plan development medical and business professional office, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Henderson, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. All those, please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously with VR being absent at vote.
Thank you. Item 54, who's presenting for 54?
Sam Thomas Development Coordination. Agenda item number 54 is REZ2529. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at 240, 258 South Plant Avenue and 205, 207, 209 and 211 West Platt Street. The request is to rezone from office professional and commercial general to plan development for a school. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available if there's any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for staff? Applicant?
Good afternoon, Counsel. Charles Davis on behalf of applicant 100 South Ashley Drive, Suite 2000. We just wanted to thank the city, staff, community and especially the applicant's neighbor, Publix, for all the support and work on this project and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Very good, okay. And, public comment, anybody in the public wishing to speak to this item?
Move to close.
A motion to close from Councilwoman Miranda, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Hertek, would you like to read this item?
Yes. File number REZ2529, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 240 and 258 South Plant Avenue and 205, 207, 209 and 211 West Platt Street in the City of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classifications OP office professional and CG commercial general to PD plan development school, providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion from Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Congratulations. Item 55.
Stephanie Pope Development Coordination. Item number 55 is REZ2532. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at 918 East 23rd Avenue. The request is to rezone from residential single-family 50 to plan development for residential single-family detached uses. Revisions have been completed and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available for any questions.
Anybody have any questions for staff? Applicant?
Steve Michelini representing the petitioner and respectfully request your approval. You may recall that we adjusted the setbacks to save some grand trees and make it a little more accommodating. We turned them so that they all faced the correct way for the street frontage. Respectfully request your approval.
Anybody have any questions for the applicant? Is there anybody in the public that would wish to speak to item 55? Is there a motion to close?
Move to close.
Motion to close from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please record your vote.
Nope.
Oh, yeah, read it, jeez, the second time I've done that. Okay, go ahead and read it.
I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of 918 East 23rd Avenue in the City of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in Section 1 from zoning district classification RS50 residential single-family to PD plan development residential single-family detached, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. Please record your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel.
Absolutely. Moving on to item 56.
Sam Thomas Development Coordination. Agenda item number 56 is REZ2513. This item is a rezoning request for the property located at 4601[1699.05] and forty-six-eleven West North A Street. The request is to rezone the property from residential office one and planned development to planned development for residential single-family attached. Revisions are complete and certified plans have been submitted to the clerk's office. I'm available if there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions for staff? Is there a applicant in the audience? Okay, applicant online.
Yes, Rob Rosner, Florida Design Consultants. I need to know records.
We need to swear.
I want to hear any questions you might have.
Rob, you need to swear in. Can you please raise your right hand and let the clerk swear you in?
Sure.
Do you swear, do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to provide is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, start from the beginning with your name, please.
My name is Rob Rosner. I'm with Florida Design Consultants. I'm representing the applicant.
Okay, anything you'd like to say before we move on?
We appreciate everybody's help in getting this application put together and the staff's help and your suggestions for making this a good project, and we ask for your support to, for approval.
Very good. Is there anybody in the audience that would wish to speak to item fifty-six?
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and we left off with Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number fifty-six, file number REZ twenty-five, dash thirteen. Orders being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property Jennifer vicinity of forty-six-oh-one, forty-six-eleven Northwest North A Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RO-one residential office and PD planned development to PD planned development residential single-family attached providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Please record your vote.
Motion carry unanimously.
Very good. Well, that concludes our second readings. We're moving on to the one-thirty public hearings on matters for review. Item fifty-seven, staff?
Good afternoon. Kamari Pettis-Mackel from the Legal Department. Item number fifty-seven, as Mr. Chair stated, is a review hearing for the city of Tampa, application SU-one, twenty-five, thirteen, for the property located at two-two-one-nine East Columbus Drive. The petitioner for this matter is Brittany Osborne from Silver Tuna LLC, and the request that was made by the applicant and the petitioner was for dwelling, single-family attached. Staff denied the application request on February twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-five. In your packets, I provide City Council copies of code sections twenty-seven, dash sixty-one. I specifically provided the language in code section twenty-seven, dash one-thirty-two, which are the two requirements for single-family dwelling attached, and I also provided you copies of code section twenty-seven, dash one-twenty-nine, and twenty-seven, dash thirty. I've also provided sample motions and the rules of procedure for City Council to use in order to conduct this review hearing. As provided in code section twenty-seven, dash sixty-one, this is a de novo review hearing, which means City Council can take new evidence. After you, you could hear testimony from the audience or from anyone, and after you hear all the evidence and review everything regarding this matter, City Council can take two actions. City Council can affirm the decision of the zoning administrator who denied the application, or you can overturn the decision of the zoning administrator and therefore grant the request. I see that staff, Mr. David Hunter, is online in order to give a complete overview of this application with the city, and with that, I'll turn it over to him.
So, David, you have not been sworn in yet, right?
I was on while you guys were doing it, so yes, I have.
Yeah. Is there anybody in the audience that was planning on speaking to this item or the next item that has not been sworn in? Okay, good, so we're good to go. Thank you. Okay, David?
I need to share my screen if that's all right.
While you're doing this, is there any ex parte communications that need to be received and filed? Anybody? No, hearing none.
Let's see. Can you guys see my screen here?
Yes.
Okay, great. This, uh, so this presentation, my name is David Hunter. I'm the Planning and Design Coordinator for the city of Tampa. This presentation covers SU-one, twenty-five, dash thirteen for twenty-two-nineteen East Columbus Drive. The request is for petition, for review of the special use to allow single-family attached dwelling units in the CN, which is a commercial neighborhood zoning district. The petitioner is Brittany Osborne, representing Silver Tuna LLC, which owns the property. This is the subject property in question, Columbus and Twenty-third. Site plan, Columbus, East Columbus is up here to the north, which represents the side.
David, can I interrupt you for a moment? I think you probably want to read your notes, but it's very difficult for us to see the presentation. Are you able to go to full screen for presentation mode on this for us so we can see the slides?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, which screen are you looking at?
It's the little television-looking screen there on the bottom of the, Councilman Henderson, you're.
There you go.
There you go, perfect, thank you.
Sorry. Uh, here's the slide. Do you want me to go back?
No.
No, we're good.
Okay. Here was the site plan in question. We have the side to the north along East Columbus, the rear, uh, to the west, side to the south, and then the front along North Twenty-third Street. Per twenty-seven, dash forty-three of the Tampa Code, a single-family attached dwelling contains a minimum of three and a maximum of eight units. Units are attached on both sidewalls except end units from ground to roof, and there's no continuous group can exceed two-hundred feet in frontage width. Code requires that a single-family attached dwellings have direct access to an arterial or collector road as shown on the major street map. The subject site is accessed from North Twenty-third Street, which is classified as a local road, not an arterial or collector road. A design exception to E24, dash one-hundred was submitted on February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. The request was approved to reorient the front yard to the north, to the face north twenty, sorry, reorient the front yard to face North Twenty-third Street and reduce the required setback from seven feet to five feet, which is consistent with East Tampa overlay standards. I will be available for questions. Local roads do provide direct access to homes and businesses, carry low volumes of traffic at low speeds, something to note of.
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
My presentation.
Councilwoman Hertak?
So, I just want to, thank you for the presentation. I just want to clarify, we're here because this is considered multifamily and it's facing, and it's, it accesses an arterial, or I'm sorry, a local and not an arterial or collector.
The applicant came in to put residential use on a lot zone CN, which requires a special use.
Okay, so this is.
The, as I mentioned, the applicant did come in for a design exception to reorient the site, so.
Okay.
To front Twenty-third Street. Otherwise, they would typically front East Columbus.
So, what's the basis of denial?
Yeah, I'm, that's what I'm trying to get at.
David, can you tell us, so what was the basis of denial from staff on this?
Uh, well, the, the request for single-family attached dwelling units was found consistent with the condition that access to West Oak Hiller is left in and right out only by staff as it does not meet the criteria found in twenty-seven, one-thirty-two. That access, the access is provided from North Twenty-third Street, which is a local road.
So, the basis of denial is that this is a local road, not an arterial or collector road? Is that the basis of staff's denial on this? Can we just get like a yes or no answer to that?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Okay, very good. Is staff, anything else from staff to present on this? Anybody else over there for staff to present on this? Okay, is there an, the petitioner?
Good afternoon, Council. My name's Jeff Sardisco. I'm here on behalf of Silver Tuna. I guess I can answer any questions that you guys have regarding this. It's actually going to be four townhomes with, we're asking for the access coming off of Twenty-third. There's only four other houses on that entire street, none on the west side. So, we would be, we're asking for, obviously, access from the Twenty-third, which the DE-one was already approved, and everything else has been approved. There was two reasons for denial, one for the local road. The second item has already been addressed. That was just missed on the initial application.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Can you put up a site plan?
Which is a little bit different than what you see. Because of it being East Tampa overlay, we couldn't have the guest parking spot in front of one of the units, so we actually lost a unit on that south side and shifted a little bit. We're only increasing maybe one or two cars a day per unit.
Can you zoom out a little bit? There's a little wheel at the top, the very top.
On the very, very top.
The very, very tippy top, yeah. The other way, perfect, okay, thank you. The, the only thing, the only thing I have to say is that if we don't fix the fact that we can't have housing in this city because we need space for an extra parking space for guest parking.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, that has to be in the LDC. This is a waste, an absolute waste of land.
I agree.
I'm sorry.
I brought that up to multiple people, and I was told, being in East Tampa overlay, that variance would never be approved. And I've already been dealing with this now for, I mean, I know you guys worked with Oliver Rodriguez. He's been up here, I'm sure, many times, well-respected. He was beating his head against the wall too, because of not being able, I mean, we could add the space. We had different ways of doing it, but now we lost an entire unit. I just built two townhomes directly north of that. There is, I don't know, ten, twelve, always empty on-street parking that people could also use. This, this street is, just directly to the south of this, is plenty of room for parking. There, the adjacent property on the backside is facing the southern street. I can't think of it right now, but.
Very good.
Correct.
Okay.
I would love to add a fifth one, trust me.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
That's it, I appreciate your time.
Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item?
Motion to close.
Councilwoman Hertak?
I, I do want to ask staff, like, like, for the future, what can we do so we don't have?
Well, I think we should take that outside of the.
Okay, fine, yeah, I will then take it out. I'm just.
Unless it's relative, unless it's relevant to your decision.
But, I mean.
Because it's not going to affect this case.
Yeah, it's not going to affect this case, but that's just absolutely unacceptable.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, I heard a motion to close from.
Me.
Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Miranda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, who would like to take on this?
I'll read it.
This complicated task. Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, I'll just read it.
Okay.
Somebody wants to add in. Fifty-seven.
You see, you see those?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't have that.
I'll do it.
Okay.
I didn't pass him, that's why you don't have. It's the last page.
Do you want me to read it? Okay. Give me one second.
Councilman Maniscalco, you ready to go with this?
Yeah, if he's, if he's got it, yeah.
So, overturn the denial, right?
Yes.
Item number fifty-seven, I move to overturn the zoning miniature's denial of SU-one, twenty-five, dash thirteen, for the property located at two-two-one-nine East Columbus Drive because the petitioner provided competent substantial evidence that the application does meet the specific standards set forth in City of Tampa Code Sections twenty-seven, dash one-three-two, and twenty-seven, dash one-two-nine.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Carlson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. Councilman Hertak, would you like to add something?
Yeah, I'll add reasoning, and that's because this local road is a butts, or is close to an interstate and is quieter, so it is not, it will not impede the traffic in the surrounding neighborhood.
It's a friendly amendment from Councilman Hertak.
Yes.
Okay, except in the second of the steps as well, thank you. So, we have a motion for Councilman Carlson, a second for Councilman Maniscalco. Let's have a roll call vote.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Hertak?
Yes.
Henderson?
No.
Vieira?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
And Clint Dinnan?
Yes.
Motion carried with Henderson voting no.
Congratulations. Item number fifty-eight.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Dana Crosby, Collier with the City Attorney's Office. Item fifty-eight is a petition seeking review of an Architectural Review Commission decision made during its meeting on March third, two thousand and twenty-five. The matter is ARC twenty-five, dash five-five, and it's relating to property located at nine-oh-nine South Rome Avenue. In the initial application to the ARC, the owners requested approval to reruef a Spanish eclectic-style property with shingle roofing rather than replacing the existing barrel tile roof. Because the roofing material is inappropriate for the architectural style, approval of the material was beyond the scope of that which the ARC administrator could approve, and so it was taken to the ARC Board. At the March third, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, the ARC denied the certificate of appropriateness to reruef the structure with shingles based on relevant provisions of the Hyde Park Design Guidelines for the city of Tampa, finding that it is not permissible to replace the roofing with a material that's not characteristic of the building's architectural style. On March fourteen, twenty twenty-five, the owners appealed the ARC decision to City Council, and this matter was set by this council for a public hearing today at your March twenty-seventh meeting. I've given you, the backup materials that are in the file include the initial application, the staff report, staff's photo presentation at the ARC, public comment, ARC meeting minutes, ARC's written decision, owner's petition for review, and the owner's backup, and the owner's affidavit establishing that they have complied with our notice requirements in twenty-seven, one-forty-nine. I just circulated a packet for you all that includes the hearing procedures for today's review, as well as sample motions, section twenty-seven, sixty-one of the code relating to review hearings, section twenty-seven, one-one-five of the code relating to the certificate of appropriateness, section twenty-seven, one-one-one of the code relating to the intent for the ARC and architectural preservation, and the relevant pages of the Hyde Park Design Guidelines. Pursuant to twenty-seven, sixty-one, J-two, City Council will apply a de novo standard of review in this matter. Your decision is not limited to the record that was created at the ARC, and you may take public testimony and accept new evidence. However, just remember in your review that the City Council is standing in the shoes of the ARC and should apply all applicable ordinances to the facts before you when arriving at your decision. Again, the application was filed with ARC requesting a certificate of appropriateness to reruef the Spanish eclectic-style property with shingle roofing rather than the barrel tile roof, and it was denied by a five-zero vote. So, after considering all your evidence, you can make one of three, you can take one of three roads, affirm or approve the ARC's decision to deny the shingle roof, overturn the ARC's decision, and grant the certificate of appropriateness to allow the roof to be reruef with shingles, or remand the matter back to ARC with directions indicating your basis for that remand. So, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ron Vila, who is our staff on this item, but I'm available if y'all have any questions before I step down.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Council. Ron Vila, I'm staff with Stork Preservation. To continue the introduction from legal, this is ARC, dash twenty-five, dash zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-five-five. This is for the address of nine-zero-nine South Rome Avenue. This was presented at a public hearing in front of the ARC in March third, two thousand and twenty-five, and prior to going to the ARC staff's findings that this exceeds the administrative authority under chapter twenty-seven, one-eighteen, parentheses, two, parentheses, parentheses, D. The proposed material is inappropriate to your architectural style with the plans that we reviewed on February eighteen, two thousand and twenty-five. So, staff, staff said that didn't meet our criteria, so therefore, it goes to the commission to make a, a motion to see if they were going to approve the request or deny the, their request moving forward. At this time, I'd like to go through the photo essay to bring you current. This is an area. This is Rome Avenue, which is one of the main arteries into Hyde Park Village and to Bay Shore, and the street to the south is Jettan. Property in question is here. To get a sense of place, this is our vicinity map. Once again, you have the major artery coming in, Rome Avenue. So, you see Hyde Park Village is to the southwest of Hyde Park Village. This is one of the buildings of the property in question. This is the front elevation, which faces Rome. This is the front elevation and the south elevation. If you break down the vernacular of this building, you look at the character-defining features, you see the stucco, you see the arch windows, you see the balconies here where the ironwork, you see the courtyards that are very characteristic to the Mediterranean-style architecture. Once again, you see an interior courtyard, and then what's in question today is the roof material, and currently it has a barrel tile roof. This is a secondary structure behind, to the west of the two main buildings, and this is the parking area. Just to complete the photo essay, these are some other structures within the immediate vicinity that was part of the photo presentation at the ARC. This is on Rome, and this is on Rome as well. Just to conclude, going back to the subject site, this is the front elevation as. Just to conclude, going back to the subject site, this is the front elevation as it faces Rome, and it has all the character-defining features of that Mediterranean-style, uh, structure. Moving forward, I'd like to, to provide you with the Hyde Park Design Guidelines, which were staff, and the Architectural Review Commission gets their information to pose on a, on a, on a motion. So this is on page fifty-three of the Hyde Park Design Guidelines. I'm just going to read a little bit from the, from the guidelines. I have it underlying here. It says, uh, "And each of these elements is important in defining the character of the house and the surroundings. Every effort should be made to retain these features or repair them. Where repair is not practical, they should be replaced with compatible materials." Then further down, it speaks on clay tile is often used on these Mediterranean-style homes, uh, on this building as, as well as other ones within the district. Continuing on page fif- fifty-four of the Hyde Park Design Guidelines. "A modification or replacement of a roof or roofing will require certificate of appropriateness prior to commencement of construction. The administrator shall review the application to determine the extent of the alteration. If the application involves a minor roof repair or replacement with appropriate materials, staff may issue the certificate of appropriateness. If the application involves roof repairs which reach beyond the roof's surface or where the roofing material is not similar to the existing material, then the ARC shall review the application at a regular ARC public hearing." This is on page fifty-five of the Hyde Park Design Guidelines. It talks on what's permissible to maintain the original roof material, repair or replace the roofing material as close to the original as possible in size, shape, color, and texture. It is not permissible to replace the roof material which is not characteristic to the style of the building. So I kind of broke down the, the composition of the building itself. Uh, staff felt that it was inconsistent with our criteria. The Architecture Review Commission also denied the request moving forward, and then we do have one motion, excuse me, one letter from Hyde Park Preservation, Inc., and they reviewed this at one of the regular meetings, and they said that the request was inconsistent with the Mediterranean-style architectural, and the following motion is that the HPPI Board is opposed to the request for a certificate of appropriateness and supports the city staffs in the finding that it's inconsistent with the guidelines governed by the local Hyde Park Historic District. That concludes my portion of this. I'll be here to answer any questions.
Counselor Maniscalco.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vila. First, it's a, it's a beautiful home. Uh, second, I have a question. So they want to replace the existing clay tile with modern, uh, shingles?
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm seeing here what's appropriate roofing materials, sawn wood shingles. I don't know if that's, uh, something that they are considering, or they're going for just that modern look, but my question is, in the Mediterranean style, I see the surrounding structures, and I'm assuming those were nineteen-twenty structures, uh, they all have that clay tile. Do are there structures that exist that are Mediterranean-style and have the wood shingles? I know it's kind of an odd question, um, but does that defeat the entire purpose of Mediterranean style if you were to go to those wood shingles?
The guidelines show a different roofing material for a different kind of architecture. The rough sawn, the rough sawn wood shake shingles would have been more for a craftsman-style home.
Okay.
So you have to have compatible roofing material with the structure that is.
So really, to keep it Mediterranean-style, it would have to be that clay tile?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there a petitioner? Yes, sir.
Hi, Counsel. My name is John Soroki. Um, myself and my wife Lisa moved into nine-oh-nine South Rome Avenue, uh, ten years ago, and today I have a, a statement, a story and a statement. First of all, I want to, uh, say my first statement is I am here requesting what I feel is right for the building at this time in its life cycle, and I'm going to take a, a second and explain to you why that is, and for your consideration and your approval, okay? It's good to know the backstory with what happened. Approximately fifteen years ago, the residents, first of all, I'm one of six condominium residents at nine-oh-nine South Rome. Approximately fifteen years ago, they purchased a brand-new tile roof for two of the buildings. They had a contractor put the roof on for them, and it is a concrete, um, S-shaped roof, not barrel tile, and it's not clay, it's concrete. So fifteen years ago, the roof that was put on by the contractor was approximately fourteen or fifteen years old. They were storing it from when they built homes, so in essence, what we have on the building today are, are concrete tiles that are approximately thirty years old. So now I will tell you the, the story. Uh, storms in twenty-twenty-three, starting in twenty-twenty-three, not last year's. What happened is the air going under the tiles, it's called chattering, and I have a roofing expert, Lenny Gonzalez with Westfall Roofing here today. She didn't have any questions for Mr. Gonzalez, but there was called chattering of the tiles, which they lift and they drop. It breaks the connection points on the tiles where they attach to the battens where they attach to the roof. So what happened after we had the series of storms in twenty-twenty-three, we had tiles that slipped all over the building. Our first thing was, we had a roofer come out, spray some of the sticky stuff underneath it, and put them back in place. A little more time went on, and more tiles continued to slip forward, and what happened is during the mom-and-dad season for squirrels, they got in and they ravaged the underlayment under the roof. They ate holes in it, dug at it, clawed at it all over the entire roof on both of the buildings. So we actively have six or seven active leaks in the building, so that was the storms of twenty-twenty-three. Moving into twenty-twenty-four, we, um, were going to apply with, uh, first of all, this is an important part of the story. Before I knew there was an ARC, and I want to commend them for the job that they do, taking care of our historic buildings in, in Hyde Park. They do an amazing job. I learned through this adventure that they're called contributing structures. We are an uncontributing structure built in the late eighties, so we're not part of the historic structures. So what happened with this is we, we had our board meeting, and I went to them and I said, this is very important because we've only had fourteen years to collect money, um, for replacement of a roof. We're nowhere close to what the value of a tile roof is to replace this. So we do have money for, uh, a shingle roof. And when we looked at the shingle roofs that were in the neighborhood, and I've got a little tour here to show you as well, we're saying the, the black and white or gray and silver shingle roofs really doesn't fit the style of our building, which is not, um, it, it is Mediterranean, but the name of our association are the cloisters condominium of Hyde Park, and cloister, as you know, is French. So I had a, a company, a, a person who works for a major, uh, firm here give us their recommendations on what structure we actually were, and it was told that we are actually French, which is not, not Spanish. What really makes us look Spanish is the, the red roof that's on the building. But going back to this, we said we really cannot have, um, a black roof and a silver roof. When you stand in our front porch and you look right down the street, the corner of Jotun in Rome, this is the, the building that is there, a condominium, a three-unit condominium. I said, whatever that roof is, that's what we have to have in our building, because we are in Hyde Park, and Hyde Park has a certain look to it, and we just can't put a, a general, you know, bungalow-type roof on this building. It won't look proper. So we contacted all the residents, we did an eight-thousand-dollar assessment per unit to get to the seventy-five-thousand dollars that we needed to get the roof that we're presenting to you today that we were asking for. So we got that far along, and we hired, um, a, a roofing company, and they went to get the permit, and they, that's when we learned that the ARC, I learned that the ARC existed and what role they played in approving and disapproving roofs. We started that process in, um, in twenty-twenty-four. Uh, what the person who started the process had to move away to go to school abroad. The process resumed with another member of our, our board, and that member was, uh, too busy, uh, trying to do their, their job, because this is a, a lot of work to get in front of you with all the mailings and what has to, to be done. So I took up the, uh, the issue of getting this in front of you. So we raised the money, we learned that this roof is a state-of-the-art roof from Owens Corning. This has a three colors into this. The one that we're presenting, which I brought samples that I will show you, is a, a five-color roof. It's a top-of-the-line roof. So this is a, a better view of our condominium association. You can see the overhang of the trees. The concrete roof that's on here is no longer made, so it's not a matter of going out and buying more tile, uh, to fix this roof, because if you did put a different tile on this, it's an S-shaped tile, not a barrel tile, it wouldn't match, and it would be hodgepodge where you'd have light and dark spots and dirty spots and clean spots. It, i- if you replaced it completely with tile because of the tree overhang, in about two years, it's going to be filthy dirty again with mold and mildew. The roof that we're presenting to be put on the building is state-of-the-art Owens Corning that has built-in mold inhibitors and mildew inhibitors, and it's guaranteed by Owens Corning to look beautiful for the next fifteen years. It's a twenty-five-year product. Um, I'm sixty-three years of age, so it'll take me out. Hopefully, uh, I'll be around to see the next roof that goes on. But we're talking about the goal for everything is beautification of Hyde Park. This building, and a couple of the notes from the meeting that took place, uh, when the council, the ARC council had their discussion, they discussed among themselves and said, if this building was presented today as a new build, would we allow it? And they said, yes, we would. We would allow it. The second bit of that conversation was that was said that if the building was painted all white, there were no discernible features of any artistic style available for that building, meaning that the roof style changing to, Lenny, if I could have one of the samples to, to show, to a, uh, a tile that, once again, I'm sorry, a shingle that looks like across the street that what's there, it's going to resemble, um, your wood shake shingles you were talking about, because in our, um, in, in, my feeling is that the building, because it is French and French cloister uses, um, shingles, I'm sorry, they use s- slate tiles, and they use a lot of cedar-shaped shingles. So the closest thing that we could come to would be a five-color, um, shingle, and there's different variations of colors in this. I've also brought.
You gotta lift it up, we can't see it.
To, to show.
As a matter of fact, bring it to the front of the podium so the camera captures it as well.
Okay.
In front of him, or by, next to him. No, no, up, 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 up.
Okay.
There you go.
So this is, and also we want to show the back of this to, to show. I'm going to flip ahead of myself a little bit and put this up on the big screen. This is if you can, you, if we go back to.
If you put it down there, it'll automatically come on.
Okay, it'll automatically come on. I'm going to start back with this picture. So if we go back to the picture of the condominium, this is what I could find in yellow for you that would show what that style roof would resemble on a Mediterranean. Once again, this is a Mediterranean asphalt shingle roof example showing you the golden-yellow, honey-golden-yellow with that type of a look. So this is what the outcome would be. Now, I've brought to you another picture of a brand-new build, and you're familiar with Hyde Park. This is right next to Four Beechy. Um, this is the building. It's right next to Four Beechy. It's a beautiful, beautiful building. It has a two-color, um, asphalt, um, shingle roof on it. And it, it's a gorgeous building. I would be a proud owner of that building. Right behind Four Beechy, there's a brick building. Once again, it has a two-color asphalt shingle. The difference in price, that black and white or silver and gray roof would have cost us thirty-six thousand dollars. We had thirty-eight thousand in the bank. We took an eight-thousand-dollar assessment for every unit to come up to the seventy-five thousand dollars to put on the state-of-the-art roof that we just showed you, okay? So at this life cycle of the building, we feel this is the right thing to do, and here's the other reasons for that. This roof is an eight-twelve pitch, okay? During the meeting with the ARC, another thing that was said to, I assume that the person was a contractor or an architect, he made the comment, I wouldn't walk it, it's not safe. Every person that's come out to work on the roof has told us, we have to charge extra for this. This isn't the appropriate roof, it's too slippery, uh, we can't come out. They can attest to this from Westfall. They had to come out. We had our chimney caps removed. You'll see in the pictures, there are, um, there's covers over the chimneys, okay? There's covers over the chimneys where they removed them to put brand-new chimney caps on. Uh, the workers that came out were slipping and sliding all over this roof when it was damp during the hurricane. Um, so it's, it's a safety issue. I think the cutoff for, um, a tile roof is a nine-twelve pitch. We're at an eight-twelve pitch. Uh, it's not safe as, as of what came from the, uh, the ARC person who made that comment himself during this review. Now, I learned a lot along the way during this journey. The one thing that I share, and first of all, I want to say that I understand the, um, the essence of the ARC. I understand working with the ARC with historic buildings and the amazing work that they do with that preservation. The reason why we feel this is the right thing, there's so many issues. The insurance issue of having a barrel tile roof. Insurance companies no longer want to take care of any damages that, to the roof. They, they reject it, and people are turning to suing the insurance companies, giving it to these third-party people that spend years to collect the money, and then they put on a roof after they've, they've collected like two times the value. It's a big thing that was on Mr. DeSantis's agenda, was getting this to stop in the state of Florida as well. So one of the things that was told to us before the meeting, when we first met with the ARC, was that if we would consider putting on a roof from this particular company, which was Braava, okay? That we consider this product, which.
You can only see one at a time.
Okay. This product is made out of plastic, okay? It's, they call it synthetic, but it's really recycled Coke bottles, okay? Soda bottles. They, they asked us to consider this. This material is not in consideration for us because, A, it would be so wet and so slippery at any given time because it's plastic. There's nothing for a worker to work on it, and we're actually due to be tented again. That's a big thing. When you pay for tenting, they charge way more for an eight-twelve pitch than a standard, a standard place, and we're due to be tented a second time. I learned along the way that with saying that we could have this roof and get it approved without going through any of the considerations that this would be approved, that there was definitely a difference between historic, or I should say, the, the correct terminology is, um, non-contributing and contributing structures, because it was recommended to put plastic on a non-contributing structure, and a contributing structure, you can't do that. You can't use vinyl siding, you can't use any plastic soffit or siding or anything in the fascia. It has to stay separated. So I learned through this whole journey that there is a discernible difference between contributing and non-contributing. So I stand before you today asking you for consideration for us to spend the money, have a beautiful building, because I would love nothing more than to be the owner of this beautiful building with that asphalt roof that's two blocks from us. So you've just walked from our property down to the meat market, okay, and back. This other existing property that I showed you is, I look across the street. That was our entire inspiration to make the eight-thousand-dollar assessment was because that's what we look at when we look out our front door. So you walk there, you see that. You walk down the street, you see the beautiful building that's our, our government building. I had a picture of it here someplace as well, our government building. So I'm down to my time, but this is the roofing products we're asking for approval on, and we even present it one step further. If the council would determine that keeping within the style, would, would, they could actually pick the color that you want. If you feel we need to stay with red, we're happy to do that. But we very much like the, the, the. But we very much like the, the, the roof that we showed. This is the red. But we very much like the roof that we showed, which is consistent with a cedar shake shingle, if you will.
Thank you. That's, the time is up for that presentation. Councilman Maniscalco, you had a question?
Yes, sir. So looking at the style of your building, you have balconies and then you have the archways at the top of the windows. To me, that's Mediterranean style. Because when I think of French cloister, I think of Versailles. And they have open archways. They have archways, but they're like open courtyards. This is, from my knowledge, everything, the characteristics of a Mediterranean style home and a Mediterranean style home almost always has this clay tile, you know, this, these curved pieces on the roof. And going to the shingles as we're, as we're just shown, just completely, you know, defeats the purpose of the design of this house. And the ones that you showed were like 1970s, 1980s, one with the red brick. That's a, a completely different style. And then the one farther down, which is like the gray color.
Councilman Maniscalco, do you have any questions? Because otherwise that may be more appropriate as we close the hearing.
Yeah, no, I'm just, you know, in my opinion, you know, the design is Mediterranean and not cloistered.
Yeah. Any questions for the petitioner applicant? Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item? Nobody in the public? Staff, would you like to provide some clarification?
Just briefly, again, Ron Villa, staff with Historic Preservation. This is the property in question. I like to focus on this. There were many examples that were shown. I think it didn't have any relevance to, to what we're looking at today. This structure was built in 1988 and the inspiration of the designer has these components. He had stated that the roof has been changed one time, that's true. But the original roof matched what's here. So that was the inspiration and the design aspects of the architect of record. You know, there, there's a lot of different roof materials that are out there that I think are compatible. I believe that the, the shingle roof that is shown is not compatible with this style. He used some words as beautiful and insurance and there's different factors that go into the decision that you're going to make today. The, the, the decision that staff made and the Architecture Review Commission is architecturally compatible. So this roof is compatible with the style of house that is shown. It went to the board. It was a five oh vote unanimously to deny the application as presented. I conclude my portion.
Thank you, Ms. Villa. I have a question for staff, legal a question. This case was presented to ARC. ARC made its determination based on the code. When you gave us our, our guidance for this case, you said that we are basically standing in the same shoes that ARC stood and we're using the same code that they used. We can't change the code. The code is what the code is. We are interpreting what the code is.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if the code states one thing, that's what we're supposed to interpret what that code is. We don't, we can't.
That's correct.
We have, we don't have the flexibility of saying, oh, that's not fair. We have, we have to, we have to interpret what the code is.
Yes, you will read the code and go with what the code states that we must do.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Can I just ask staff one question real fast, please? When, when buildings like this are purchased or when a unit like this is purchased, is there some kind of disclosure from the sellers that, that disclose that, that these rules are in place?
I would think that's up to the, the Realtor to, to state on record what's, you know, the criteria moving forward. So if there's a, an HOA that has to bid here too, then that's part of it.
Thank you.
Dennis Fernandez, Architecture Review and Historic Preservation Manager. I get that question a lot in my line of work. But it areas a settlement disclosure for real estate transactions. And one of the questions is standardized through the real estate disclosure is if the property is located in a historic district and what zoning applications are relevant to that particular district. So it is disclosed.
So if there's no, nobody has a rebuttal comment, that's it. The applicant, you have a rebuttal opportunity. You wish to rebut, which is, sir?
I, I do respect everybody's decision and opinions. But the thing that, the biggest question in my mind is that we were being held to the same set of guidelines, being a non-contributing structure, okay, as contributing structures are. And with the safety issues, with the pitch of the roof, it's on the verge of like, this roof shouldn't be allowed to be made in today's world at the, the angle that it is. It's very, very dangerous. And we're trying to do so many things to make it safer. And we're being held to the same things as the non-contributing structures and contributing structures. And it, it's like, I know there's a big difference in the two. And with, once again, I had no idea that we weren't allowed to change the, the, the building type because we're not a historic building. You know, even though we're within the historic society, it said if it was a brand new build today, they would allow the build. And it's still up for discussion of what the structure really is. Because even the name of our unit is the Cloisters at Hyde Park Condominium. So I don't know what the original color was 38 years ago when it was built. It could have been white. But they, we do have a courtyard in the middle. And when we had the person write up the review, which we submitted to the ARC, breaking down all the, the different architectural styles, they presented the findings of why they said it was a French, okay, Mediterranean style villa. And definitely these type of roofs are something that's prevalent. They have all three. They have barrel tile, they have slate tile, and they have cedar shake shingles in France. I, I spent a lot of nights looking at pictures of all of those. I feel aesthetically that the roof that we'd be putting on, if it was allowed to put on, is going to better fit because it's going to stay cleaner longer. It's guaranteed to look brand new for 15 years. Where if we are made to put on another concrete tiled roof, it's going to be dirty in a couple of years. And it's too steep of a pitch to be pressure washed and cleaned. You're taking a person's risk. So when I said that this was the right thing to do for this building in its lifetime, now it's different than 36 years ago. And we're all, in the end of the day, trying to do the same thing. We're trying to beautify and keep Hyde Park beautiful. I don't think we're setting a terrible precedent by allowing a change of material into this prod, into this building. Because it's safer, it does, it's, it's beautiful and it actually fits the neighborhood. I'm not asking for something that's not already on the block. I'm not asking to cover it in solar panels or to make 3D butterfly shaped laser cut designs to go on the roof. We're asking for something that is present all the way down to Hyde Park Shopping Village, including the brand new structures that we've built. That's the consideration I'm asking for. Keep the neighborhood beautiful and to, yes, change the style, but it's going to look appropriate. It's going to look beautiful like the other buildings that are there. And that's why I came in front of the council to present this a second time, hoping for your positive consideration. And I thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to close. Motion, motion to close from Councilman Maniscalco, a second from Councilman Carlson. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Would council like to discuss this? Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, let's go, let's go for a motion. Who, who wants to motion?
All right, I move to affirm the ARC's decision to deny the certificate of appropriateness requested in application and number ARC 25-55 for the property located at 909 South Rome Avenue. Because a replacement of the existing barrel tile roof with a shingle roof is inconsistent with the Hyde Park design standards, which state that it is impermissible to replace the roof with material that does not characteristic of the building's style. Here it says Spanish Eclectic in chapter 27 of the code. It was said that if this were a new construction, it would be allowed today. The thing is, this is an existing building. It may not be from the 1920s, built in 1988. But per the designer, it was made to look like a contributing historic structure. You have specific details like the balconies. You have specific details like the arch windows as shown in the photo. So it's made to look like what was in historic Hyde Park. And therefore, I would, that would be my motion to deny the certificate of appropriateness.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Maniscalco. We have a second from Councilman Henderson. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Hertek?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Vieira?
Yes.
Carlson?
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
And Clint Dennett?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay. Sorry, guys.
Sixty.
Sixty. Item number sixty. We, this is, an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. Do we have staff to present? There we go.
Good afternoon, counsel. Carl Brody from Legal Department. This is a continuation of a, an ordinance that we considered or actually that you looked at back on May 15th.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Back on May 15th, it provides a code of conduct for contractors. At the May 15th meeting, everybody was pretty comfortable with the ordinance, but we wanted to look a little closer at the enforcement provisions. And I've talked to a couple of you separately. I want to say separately so the public knows we're not breaching any public meetings rules. So I talked to a couple of you separately and we came up with the best moving forward step to put the enforcement provisions in the EBO policy. That way we can watch, see how it works. If we need to make changes, we can make changes more discreetly and not have to come back to you and change your whole ordinance again. So that's the ordinance you have before you. You have the actual ordinance. And we also provided a copy of the proposed EBO enforcement provisions. So we just requested you move this forward to second reading. And if you have any questions, I am here.
Councilman Maniscalco. Your light was on.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Hertek.
I just want to say thank you for working on this with me and with whomever else you spoke to. I think this is a great step forward. This is something the community's been asking for. We see it ourselves. I'm sure you see it yourself. So I really appreciate that we're going to start this path forward and knowing that we can modify as needed. So just thank you for all your work on this. If no one else to, I will, I'll read the ordinance. Okay. File, file number E 2025-8, chapter 26.5. Ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An ordinance of the city of Tampa, Florida, amending chapter 26.5, article one of the city of Tampa code by adding section 26.5-4, City of Tampa Code of Business Conduct. Said amendment, providing for a code of business conduct for parties contracting with the city, providing enforcement through division of equal business opportunity, providing for dispute resolution, providing for an appeal process, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinance in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date.
We have a motion, counsel?
I forgot, we were supposed to ask for public comment.
Oh, see what, that's what's happening. I turn my back and you usurp my authority. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this item?
Who to close?
We have a motion to close from Councilwoman, Miranda. Second from Councilwoman Henderson. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
I restate, or I, I, I. Yeah, I repeat my motion.
So we have a motion for Councilwoman Hertek, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. And let's have, did you have it loaded or?
It's first reading.
It's first reading.
First reading, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Eyes have it? Okay, we had, we had asked.
Wait, 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 hold on. Motion carried unanimously. Second reading and adoption will be held on June 26, 2025 at 10 o'clock AM in Old City Hall, City Council Chambers, 315 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida 33602.
Thank you. Councilman Vieira.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I, I had to run outside to get something to eat really fast. Mr. Brody, I just want to say thank you for your work on this. Again, this came about because an individual, they, they can come forward if they want. And I'll, and I'll tell them that this is on first reading. Came forth to us with a very sad story on interaction that he had that would break all of our hearts. And with regards to the allegations, so this helps, you know, address future challenges like that. So thank you for your wonderful work. You're always a pleasure to work with.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move on. We had, we had earlier taken up item number, what was it, the fire station one? Seventy. Item seventy for fire station. I understand that Captain, Chief Trip is online and we have some procurement here. So can we bring Chief, Chief Trip up? There we go. Chief Trip, would you like to start us off? And we do have, we have staff at the podium as well to talk to this. Or you just want to kick it right to them?
All right, do you, can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Okay, all right. So once again, Barbara Tript, Fire Rescue Fire Chief. And of course, as far as the item, I do have Ken, my project manager, online as well. And of course, like I say, you all had some questions that I couldn't answer. And hopefully, Mr. Richard will be there to answer those questions for you.
Thank you. We'll, we'll go for procurement here.
Contract administration.
Contract administration.
Richard Mutterback, Director of Contract Administration. And I brought, I mean, I can answer your questions. I've got, I've got, if we want to go back through the timeline of the first.
Let me, let me kick it off to Councilman Vieira to do the inquisition.
Okay.
I mean, and, and thank you for that. And, and so, you know, I, I, I called up the chief in between to get some background. And chief, I appreciate your time and so forth. So I'll go through some facts and some history on this. Some stuff that may predate you, but, but it's, it's stuff that is, to me, very, very compelling facts and that really require a clear answer on why we're here on this. I say this because, as I'll talk about, we're talking about a community that really, really needs this. In a community that I feel in the city of Tampa often gets ignored, and that's North Tampa. So, so again, as I indicated before, very briefly, you know, 2021, 22, we're looking at this land. There's a long, long story to this. We're first going to do 24 in New Tampa. We decide to do it in North Tampa, outside of 33647, to help out with 13. We start off with Station 25, which is sort of the down payment. That's an easy win because the building's already there. So then we start to get to work on it. 2023, we're talking about 24 in terms of funding it. It's, it's part of the village, doesn't go through. I tried to do a very limited tax to help fund it, does, among other things, doesn't go through. So then I go, okay, fine, let's bond it. So my point in talking about the taxes, that I believe in this so much that I said, I want to raise taxes for it. So when I talk about this, I got skin in this game. This is very, very big deal, obviously. 2024, then we do the bonding then to fund this. So there's a, a, a funding mechanism for this as well as fleet maintenance. We passed design in the, in the budget of 2023. 2024, we learn and we're not happy with this, which is that groundbreaking will begin in March of 2026. So that gets told and, and we're told, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that it's going to happen in March of 26. And we go, let's do better. And that's the whole thing of this council, let's do better. And then today we find out the groundbreaking is going to be six months after March of 2026. So instead of going from, you know, from first to third or first to second, we're told that we're pretty much back at home. So that's the frustration. The bigger frustration for me, which is that this is kind of a larger microcosm on a lot of challenges that we're having on issues, which is you, you take downtown Tampa Fire Rescue, right? I, I would love to see this year somebody, I don't represent downtown directly, we all do in a way, but I'd love to see someone try to put in the budget this year, design for a downtown station. That's long past due. We got to start pushing these things. Because when I see what's been done here, again, three years after passing design, we're going to have groundbreaking and design took a really long time. That's the big, big challenge. So my big question is to anybody who can answer this, which is what in the world happened? To delay it another six months on top of the delay that city council thought was far too long? That's the question that we need answered and that frustrates, I think, everybody here. And if you can answer that, sir, have at it.
Can I couple onto his question real quick, just so that it blends together?
Okay, Councilwoman Henderson.
Yeah. If you can answer Councilman Vieira's question in relation to the Fair Oaks project, which is moving along, it is at a phase where it is almost done, that this does not make sense. So put it in the context of Fair Oaks has moved and that's a project that I voted on since I've been on council. And this one started before I was on council.
Before I was on.
Before Hertek was on council. And the, the quick question is honestly, is that this appears to be, it's not even a question, it's a statement. This appears to be a slow walk. Somebody is slow walking this and we are now having you in front of us. Because this, we know this is not Chief Trip. She's been given the information. I'm sure her. Because this, we know this is not Chief Trip. She's been given the information. I'm sure her folks are giving her hell. And so, this is a contract, we have now isolated this problem to your division. And that's, I just want to make that statement, and I want the answer compared to a Fair Oaks. How is that moving along? Because I took a tour two weeks ago. Almost done, just in comparison to that. And we've got to make these questions a little tougher for you all, rather than just giving a report.
Let's let him answer his question.
Of course.
All right, Richard Mutterback, Director of Contract Administration. I do not have all the dates or facts for Fair Oaks, so I can't, I can't do apples to apples there. It is moving along exceptionally well right now, as it's in construction. And, and just to, Councilwoman Vera, you said, I mean, design was approved by the City Council on February the sixth of this year. That's when the actual agreement was, 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 and as part of that agreement, and, I mean, and it's, it's at your pleasure, but I have the, my same slides from February, where we went over the first two years. Do I need to go back through those, or can we start from, from this?
Oh, yeah, you may proceed.
But as far as the current dates, as far as the current dates, this is the period of service that was approved on February the sixth by everybody, four hundred and sixty-one calendar days after notice to proceed. Notice to proceed was given on March the twentieth of this year. So they had, contractually, we gave this firm four hundred and sixty-one calendar days, and when I stood here in February, I think I did the quick math in my head and said, that's about fifteen months, so I probably said about May. That's probably what I, what I said. And if I, if you took March, or somebody else said March, I apologize for that, but that would have been, I tried to solely stick to the facts of what's in the contract. Now, if I pull up, and at that time, keep in mind, we don't have an actual schedule at that point. Once we get issued a notice to proceed, we get a schedule from the firm. The firm, this, this schedule is from the firm as of three days ago. On their schedule, notice proceed was given, well, they, they put March twenty-fourth, and, oh, four hundred and sixty-one days, by the way, would put us at June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-six. If we look at their schedule, June, they're completely finished with their construction documents, GMP, submit GMP, May, June ninth of twenty twenty-six. So those four hundred and sixty-one days, contractually, I mean, that's what we, as a city, both council and, and administration agreed to. That, and now, if you look from June twenty-six, all the way down to what you're, what we're calling groundbreaking of September, that's all city, that's all city. That's, that's us approving the GMP, that's bringing it to council twice because it's over twenty million dollars. That's the, that's the stuff that we can kind of control a little bit at that point, but that's just, that's the things that happen. So, I mean, that's, that's all I can speak on as far as how we got here and how those dates are. Not a lot changed since February when we had the same discussions.
Can I?
Councilman.
Yeah, real quick, real quick, forty-five seconds if I may, and, and thank you for that. Couple of things, again, you can try to explain things as much as you want, but to me, there's a dispositive fact there that is unacceptable, which is that we're not going to have groundbreaking now until September of two thousand and twenty-six. Nothing can divorce me from the statement that that is unacceptable. We had, when back when it was, whether it's March or May of two thousand and twenty-six, the same presentation was done in terms of going through these dates and so forth and so on. And again, the push was to see how we can do it before, and before that date, March of two thousand and twenty-six. Now we're being told it's going to be about a third of a year later. Another issue is, which is, why in the world did it take so long to get to City Council? If this only got to us in February of this year, why did it take so long to get to City Council? Again, no amount of explanation is going to divorce me, or I think anybody from this City Council, from the statement that having this groundbreaking done in September of two thousand and twenty-six is just unacceptable and shows, quite frankly, not a real commitment on the part of the administration to this project. That's it. I, I, somebody try to convince me otherwise, please pick up the phone and call me and tell me. Because for me, there are certain plain facts that are not going to be divorced from reality.
Councilman Maniscalco.
You know, Councilwoman Vera's been a champion on this for years, as there was, as already has been mentioned, and he's out of here in a year and a half. So time is of the essence, and we're going to make this man drive from Tallahassee, essentially.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry.
You know, to come down for this, I mean, it's, you know, there's, there's wants and needs, and with the growth that we're experiencing in the city, you know, fire response time, firefighters, fire stations, I mean, this is something that's an absolute need. And downtown was mentioned. I mean, I can talk about other parts of the city, but this is something that, I mean, before, some council members were elected and came on this body, this was discussed. I mean, Councilwoman Vera's talked about this for, for a long, long time, in response to the union, in response to the community and what they need. And it's just disappointing to see this moving so slowly in comparison to so many other city projects. I had a meeting yesterday morning at Hannah. Hannah went up very quick, very quickly, at a, at a very big cost. And that was done. And we're asking for a simple fire station here. And I'm not pointing fingers at you because this is predating when you came on board, and you're just doing your job and answering the questions. But I can, I can totally understand the disappointment from Councilmember Vera because he's fought so hard for years, as has this entire council and being supportive for this, and we just want to see this done. So if we're going to get a groundbreaking in September of twenty-six, he has less than two months here. I mean, he's worked so hard, and he doesn't even get to essentially enjoy the fruits of, of his hard work. But it's not about him, it's about the community and the needs that, that they have. Thank you.
Councilman Carlson, and then Councilwoman Hurtak.
Yeah, first of all, I supported Councilwoman Vera five, six years ago with this. It's not my district, but I was hoping that, that this would be resolved within a year, and that was like twenty twenty-one or something, and then we could move to other parts of the city. South Tampa needs to, stations and more resources as well. But there are, there are requests throughout the city, but we had to do this one first. This was the first one in line, and it's very frustrating that it's taken so long to do this. Also, to my colleagues and anybody else, don't forget, next week, we're, it's on the agenda that to potentially use CRA money, if we could get the county's approval on the downtown fire station. But we have the same issue that, you know, in the last few years since we've been talking about this, the price has gone up or doubled or more. But also, you know, several folks in the administration have told me that, that the mayor just doesn't want to build a fire station at all. And I was told that after the last election, the mayor was high-fiving people, saying, look, we made it four years without a fire station, we're going to make it another four. First of all, I think that's disrespectful to the firefighters, the men and women who put their lives on the line every day. It's also disrespectful to the public who need to have resources when they're having a heart attack or a fire, whatever, they need to have resources on the spot. If the mayor feels that we should go to a system where we have ambulances instead of fire stations, then make that argument, let's decide that. But slow walking it and trying to tell the public that you're, you're going to do it, but then delaying it, that is just disingenuous. And so, I, I, I would like for somebody to come forward, unfortunately, Chief of Staff's not here, and Mayor's not here. I would like for somebody to come forward and explain, why is the mayor against fire stations? And if she is, why can't she give an alternative plan to tell us what she wants to do? And I feel bad for the, for the fire chief, who's stuck in the middle of this, and the union, and all the firefighters who want better equipment and, you know, safer environments, and, and the, the public needs to be treated better on this as well. Thank.
Councilwoman Hurtak.
Thank you. Can you please put up the first page of that with the four sixty-one? Yeah.
First page of which one, the schedule?
Yes, please.
Oh, no, that wasn't the first page.
Well, this is the one that I'm, so what I don't understand is, we've been working on this so long, how we don't already have, we didn't rather already have a boundary survey, a topographical survey. I mean, from my understanding, all that had been done ahead of time. Unless we're building this on a cliff, I, I just don't understand why we didn't have that stuff ahead of time, knowing that we wanted to get this done. Additionally, and no one has talked about this today, unless this is on a cliff, having twice the cost that it's supposed to be, again, just, just tells us, it's, this is a slow walk. We, we could have built another, I mean, this is almost going to be the cost of another recreation center. And, and that doesn't make any sense to me. I have talked to other departments and other cities. No one is building a fire station this expensive. And I, I just, I, I'm, I'm fine, and you know what? We're going to have a chance, on this very next item after this, to talk about where we want our money to go toward, toward building something. And I'm telling you, I, I'm not going to support the building of city buildings until this is done. This is enough. I've had enough of this. This is the only way that we're going to get our voice heard. It, it just simply is. It's, it's disappointing, it's frustrating. I, I talked to Chief Trip and, you know, as well, and I'm, I'm hearing the exact same frustrations that the gentleman who's been hired to help her move this forward, just, we can't get it done any faster. And I just don't know why this building is so difficult compared to any other building that we have built, including Hannah City Center. Why is this taking so long compared to any of those other buildings? He can't answer that.
To, taking so long to construct, I mean.
Yeah, why is it taking, not, not to construct, but just to plan? This doesn't make any sense.
Site selection was a big deal, and it's not been since, since May of twenty twenty-four, when Contract Admin actually got involved in, in advertising this to select a firm. I've told you numerous times at this podium, it takes about six months to get through that CCNA process and get someone selected. And so from May until when it was actually selected, August, and then actually bought that, we were in that six month. It actually, it actually took about seven and a half months, but we had two storms in there, and the fire chief heads up our emergency management.
That's fair.
So nothing's slow walk. It always takes six months to get through that process. And every design process, every design typically takes twelve to eighteen months. I've said that numerous times at this podium. It's not being slow walked at this point. Site selection and everyone finally agreeing on where this was going to go so that we could advertise it, that could, that could take a, play a role in what took, what took up some of that first year, year and a half.
Okay, that's fair. Councilman Vera, I have a question about this. So, for me, I want to know from you, the, the talk about this, we allocated money in twenty twenty-one for this? This is before me.
So.
Councilman Vera.
Just answer the question, if you don't mind just answering that.
And then I'll, and I'll say more after, if I may. Yes and no. It's complicated. In twenty-one, we were going, we allocated funds for New Tampa, and then the decision was made when, thanks to the, the union, bringing up the issue of North Tampa, that we would do twenty-five in North Tampa on Bush Boulevard as opposed to Kbar Ranch. So that was the early confusion on that. But, but yeah, that answers your question.
So, the, so the money for this was allocated in?
So it, it depends on what the meaning of this is, right? Which is, in twenty-three, we had tried to use some dollars for, for fire stations, including this. In twenty-four, then I finally said, look, we're not going to pass anything in terms of taxes. We did the bonding for this as well as for fleet maintenance.
Okay.
In twenty-four.
So, I, I, I'm still, I'm trying, sorry, I'm trying. So I, I think the thing that, that gets me is that we could have started this a lot sooner, and it just was a choice. And I'm, I'm still going to settle with, it was a choice. It was the administration's choice to not focus on this when we have something designed and built, a park, in that time.
Yeah.
Designed and built. It's almost done. And while a park is a wonderful amenity, it is not anywhere as important as public safety.
If I, if I may, on the, like I said, I can't speak to the dates on Fair Oaks, but when I started, June the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, it was finishing up design at that point. So it had already been in design quite some time at that point. It seems like it's going fast now, as we're looking at construction from groundbreaking to now. But like I said, I, I can get back to everyone, and I'll email you those dates to try to put the apples to, you know, try to make it more apples to apples as to what those dates were. But when I started in June of twenty twenty-three, that, that was still finishing up design then.
And, but, but I think that's kind of the point, that the administration on projects they want to work on have got that stuff started ahead of time. And that's what this was about. They will get the project started, then come to us for some money. And, and that is the way I see it. And, and I'm sorry that, if, I've got knotted heads up here. You're, you're not going to convince us otherwise. And I, I'm just really disappointed because this was clearly something the administration did not want, and it's being shown this way.
Councilwoman Henderson.
Thank you. Okay, you know what? Let's take Fair Oaks out of it and put the actual police evidence space. Remember, that was actually brought up in the new budget, since you and I have been here, Mutterback, you and me. That was, that was first presented by Deputy, I, I think Deputy Kate. Kate, yeah, she was, she was kind of like speaking on behalf of this project. And that is much further along than this. Would you agree with that? But we, I mean, that was an existing building.
And it was, and it's already, it's been.
Yeah.
I can really only speak to, once we actually get a contract with someone to do a design. That's all I can speak to.
Okay. Can you put back up the, the paper where you put four hundred and sixty-one days?
One where I hand wrote it, or the one where it was in the?
You pointed to the four hundred and sixty-one days that we agreed to, apparently, in an ordinance. It was at the bottom of the page.
Yes, ma'am, the period of service.
Yeah, right there. Is that SOP? Is that a standard operating practice or procedure?
Every one of, every one of our contracts, our agreements, has both a period of service and a compensation.
No, that, that amount of days. Is that?
No, that, we get that from, the firm tells us, how long is this going to take?
After we pick them. We pick them first, and then they get.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And during this, again, I don't have the exact in front of me, but during the presentations for this, when the four different firms all stood in front of us, they all came with roughly the same dollar amount and period of service, all four. So now, and I think, and when I was here in February, I think I made the comment to Councilwoman Vera that, you know, we can talk about the first two years or three years, whatever, but I want to talk about now, and now it's going to start moving. And that's what I'm saying, because everybody, every firm said it was going to take this long, and it was going to cost this much, basically, roughly.
All right.
So that four hundred and sixty-one days, that doesn't, that's not a slow walk. That, that's coming from a firm who's comparing it to two or three others that they just did recently in, in other jurisdictions.
Okay. Well, I'm a woman that appreciates pushback, so I appreciate you saying it's not a slow walk. I, I, I'm starting to accept that. But we are questioning you, as we should, and apparently, we agreed to four hundred and sixty-one days.
Councilman Miranda first.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mutterback, I'm sure not questioning anything from the council's part or your part, but you did mention that you had said this to us prior, right? What, what we're talking about in a prior statement. I would like to ask you for a favor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
All this is taped. Do you remember when that was?
February the sixth.
Pardon me?
February the sixth of this year is when I had, when I brought one, the same.
All right, then why don't we look at the tapes, and that's the end of the conversation.
That makes sense, Charlie.
I, I want to solve the problems. I don't want to create problems, because it's never going to get built if I keep creating problems. I want to solve the problems so we can get it built.
But it is clear we're disappointed.
Being a criminologist.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this. Is there anything this council can do to expedite this? To, to move the schedule up? Is there anything, is there anything outside of God? Is there anything that we can do?
I mean.
Follow the contract.
During that same, if you, if you remember, during that same presentation, Chief Trip and I presented some, some things that we were doing internally to try to expedite the process. You got introduced to Ken Gaiet this morning. That was one thing, hiring a project representative to work with her. So, and that will help, because now that's another set of eyes, that's, he's looking at this through, through the fire station's eyes. He's not looking at it through Contract Admin. We're black and white engineering, let's just look at exactly what's in the contract. He's looking at it operationally with Chief Trip to see, you know, how, how, and, and to help her during her review process. So, so that's, that's already taken place. I mean, we have a signed contract. We can terminate the contract and start all over again, but that's not going to speed anything up. And, and the only way to make it faster would be to pay more money, because you've always got, it's always money. I mean, so, and we, I know we don't want to pay more money because you haven't seen the actual numbers that's going to come out yet, so.
Councilman Vera.
Yes, and thank you for that. Just really quick couple of things. Site selection for this was done in two thousand and twenty-one. I, I know that because when we started talking about Station twenty-four, there was some pushback from the union, from Local seven five four in the location, it being at White Way. And my message to them was, I laughed because it's almost, it's sadly comical now, is, let's settle on White Way. Let's settle on White Way. It is city-owned property. It's gonna take years to get property. So let's, let's get the double and let's move forward what we got. So again, the property acquisition, there was no property acquisition. It's ours. So i- in terms of the site selection, that's been there for a really, really long time. And. The, I remember there was an article in the Tampa Bay Times on this issue in terms of admini- administration prerogatives. Uh, and different things like that with uh, their uh, goals and whatnot. My my issue is this. If a promise is made on a fire station, we gotta move with vigor. If there is a need, nobody builds a fire station without there being a need. If there's a need and certain statements are made, then we ought to follow through with that. That's my big, big, big disappointment here today. I I also wanna say this, it's very important, which is, and I, Councilman Amanda Scalk is always such a, a nice man with such a. Very, very wonderful heart. It goes without saying. This is, but this is not about me um, about it being, starting when I'm here. Absolutely not. Um, absolutely not. I don't care about that. Um, I fully anticipate that this will um. Uh, uh, be up and running long after, um, I'm not long, but somewhat after I'm gone. I don't care about that. I just wanna get this thing done. Um, because we've been on this for such a long time. And again, I'll close with this. Station thirteen. One out of every twenty, one out of twenty three stations took up about one out of nine calls here in the city of Tampa. It was the fifty fourth. Busiest station in the United States of America. And that's what was allowed to happen for so long. So that's what we're trying to finish the job on here. So again, and Mr. Mutterback, I know that, you know, you're here answering questions. And that's not easy on such a caustic issue. We appreciate your professionalism in in doing that, but again. I cannot be divorced from the statement that um, we needed to do so much better on this as a city on this. It's not on you, sir, whatsoever. Just that somewhere along the line, we were talking about March or so of two thousand and twenty six. Now we're talking about September after council was making a very big push to get it before then. That's frustrating because of the topic we're talking about. So, but I appreciate your, your um, your patience and your calm professional demeanor up there. Thank you.
Councilman Carlson, you'll be the last speaker on this. Can you bring it in for a landing?
Yeah, and I I, you just took some of what I wanted to say. It, we might sometimes be frustrated with the issue. We might be frustrated with the administration. But we're not, uh, at least I'm not frustrated with you, and I think you just said the same thing. Um, I I think. A lot of this preceded you. You only started a year or two ago, and this goes back five or six years. Uh, but I I just wanna thank you, Mr. Mutterback, and and Brad also for bringing a new level of professionalism to uh, contract administration. What you all did. In just a few months to clean up things and put new processes in place was uh, pretty remarkable, and you're you're trying to stick to it. So. Please, along the way, let us know if we can do anything to speed this up and and set it as a priority. Thank you.
Okay, so um, just just to remind council that we're not taking, we haven't, there's no proposed resolutions. There's nothing for this. This is a presentation, and they just told us this is gonna be done till the fall of twenty twenty six. So I mean, I just wanna make sure people understand where we're leaving this is we've just been presented a lot of information, but there hasn't been anything act, there's nothing actionable or. Further on this. Would somebody like to make something actionable or? Okay, Councilman Vera.
I apologize for interrupting you. So on June twenty sixth, Chief Trip is coming back with a public safety master plan. Um, so what I'd like to do is to have specifically on, and here's Chief Bennett, specifically something.
You wanna stop for a moment? I I bet you Chief Bennett's here because of this issue.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Chief Bennett, would you like to say something to this issue?
Yeah, John Bennett, Chief of Staff. I kinda heard my name brought up, so I figured I'd come over. Uh, I'm here to answer any questions that may have been a gap from what's been discussed already.
I don't, I mean, I I already.
Well, I think, I think, I mean, I'll fill it in because it just, I haven't really spoken a lot on this. I'm just listening to everybody else speak. And so there's a lot, there's been a lot of frustration, which you probably were watching uh, expressed because of. The site selection was made early on for the city-owned property, and the expectations was this was gonna be done. Early next year, we're, and the council's, was council was trying to push to figure out a way. How we can get it even done earlier than that. And then we were told that it's gonna be, you know, six months later than we had anticipated. So the frustration is like, why in the world has has it taken so long? To get this process rolling, and I, he did a very good job of presenting the uh, the contract that was presented in February. But it it still is frustrating, especially when, because some of the other examples have been used for con- city projects. That we've seen start and, you know, either be finished or in quickly in the process of being finished in a much shorter timeframe.
Sure. Yeah, no, again, I I can understand council and even the public's perspective on that. Um, I was, when I was listening to this, I was combing through some conversations back in twenty three. To kinda see about the site selection, and Councilman Vera is correct about, you know, the union had a thought about a different location. We saw the momentum of this site according to Chief Trip. I I remember Chief Trip specifically saying that she thought the North Tampa spot was a good location. In a very short period of time, I reached out to USF because they were building a stadium. Because we still hadn't landed on the site to see if they'd be willing to house a station that would support the new stadium. And allow us to go out the front door to New Tampa and out the back door to North Tampa. They gave us a site. It wasn't gonna work for us because it was way north up on Fletcher. And then this site came up. That was a very quick turnaround. I, it was like. One-month email question to them. Um, so then, when I look at this timeline from twenty three. To the RFQ posting in May of twenty four, so from April of twenty three to May of twenty four, it seems like there was. Just reading from the bullets, that the slight feasibility was a big deal with environmental. And then from there, the process kicked in that Richard's talked about. So I get the perception of, but there's no slow walking, and I'll tell you what I think the bigger anchor is. To no slow walking, is that the mayor approved twenty four to be staffed inside thirteen already. So Station twenty four is operating out of thirteen. So the ground resources, which cost more recurring than it does for the capital, have been in place. For my records, at least, I think since twenty twenty one, which helped cut the, because they were running the wheels off on thirteen when we got here. And then the mayor put in um, with Chief Trip, and even before Chief Trip, what we call peak units for a while. To make sure that we knock down the calls and make sure our response time increased. And then as twenty five came online and and Chief Trip. And uh, budget and council, of course, approved additional medic resources. They were plugged into the stations that didn't have. I can tell you, and I've got Mike Perry right behind me, that the most money put into any department so far has been the fire department. And so resources have been really pumped into the fire department for all the reasons we know. This administration's been playing catch-up on infrastructure, deployment, resources, apparatus, et cetera. So we want the station just as bad as everybody else does. I can't speak to the CAD timeline like Richard did. But I can tell you, there's no slow walking. Twenty four is in operation now. It's just not geographically perfect. When the station opens up, we'll get some better distribution. And then, of course, when CAD comes online, all these things are gonna culminate into one of the best fire departments in the country.
Thank you. I I don't, I mean, I don't wanna, uh, what? Oh, no, no. I was gonna make a motion. May I?
Yes, Councilman Vera.
So thank you. So again, and and I appreciate those words, Chief, and I appreciate you coming out. You may be a little under the weather, so thank you for coming out. Um, but again, for for me, the bigger issue is the the infrastructure of the building itself at twenty four. Where it was, where it's supposed to be. And again, when we hear a couple of months ago, however long it was, it's gonna be March or so of two thousand and twenty six. Now we're being told six months later on that positioned building, which was positioned there pursuant to the. Uh, 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 expertise, obviously, of TFR, that is an issue that I think requires a lot of scrutiny. So consistent with that, um, I'm gonna make a motion that on June twenty sixth, Tampa Fire Rescue is gonna be presenting on the Public Safety Master Plan. That specifically um, uh, uh, reports be given on what's happening with Station twenty four and what can be done to. Expedite this. And I will be working um, with Chief Trip and the other interested parties to see what can be done. Because this is my frustration, is that we were already going through this process to see how it could be uh, um, uh, made quicker. And now we're being told that it's gonna be suc- substantially slower. That's the frustration, so.
Councilman Vera, I I hear your frustration, but how is that um, quantitatively different than the emotion, the the item today that we're dealing with? Does it sound, I mean, that was what was supposed to be presented today, so.
So i- it's the Public Safety Master Plan that's being presented that day, which is citywide, but specific. Um, I I, and I say that just to keep this on our radar. I don't want it to get lost. Trust me, I won't let it get lost, but I'd like to have.
Basically, it's just a continuation of this item to.
In effect, in effect.
May I?
Councilman Harjek.
On June twenty sixth, we have a motion, staff to provide an in-person report on the status of Station twenty four to include reports from fires. Uh, Chief Barbara Trip, Director of Contract Administration, Richard Mutterback, and the Project Manager. In addition, in addition, this would include updates on the date for a groundbreaking.
Well.
So you are on it.
Her attack, apparently I am. So motion cheerfully withdrawn.
Well, what I, what I, with, I think with the the clarification that if. Exactly, if 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 Chief Trip with Mr. Mutter, and uh, Chief Bennett, if you are able to. Um, figure out a way of shaving time off of that. Obviously, you hear the sentiment of council and probably the public as well. That any way that we can shave some time off of that would be greatly appreciated, and we we're looking forward to hearing from you on June twenty six on that issue. Okay, thank you very much.
I just realized that we never gave Chief Trip a chance to speak. I wonder if she had anything she wanted to say.
She, she, Chief is probably, I I imagine right now she's pedaling backwards as fast as she can to get away from this. Chief Trip?
No, I don't have anything, and thank you. I'll thank everyone.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief, for uh, coming back to us. Thank you. Very good. Okay, we're going to, uh, thank you very much. Thank you for coming out uh, to you guys. Appreciate it. Uh, we're going to move on. We need to move some staff or uh, report resolutions. I'd like a motion, make a, uh, hear a motion from someone to move sixty four, sixty five, sixty six, sixty seven, sixty eight. I have a motion from Councilman Henderson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay. So. Item number sixty two. Mr. Perry?
Well, thank you for allowing me to present with you at this point.
We're, we're gonna delay this to maybe eight PM. Thought that, you know, I like that better, but.
Whatever it takes, sir. Remember, I'm a former infantryman. Whatever the mission is, we'll be there to do it.
Very good.
Um, good afternoon, council. Mike Perry, Budget Officer. Um, before I begin the presentation on item sixty two and then sixty three, I do have members of the bond issuing team here. Um, Molly Clark and Matt Stansberry are from Public Resource Advisory Group. And they serve as the financial advisor, which really serves as the quarterback for the bond issuings. They coordinate all activities. They provide advice on structuring. So if you got any questions. Steve Miller from Neighbors Giblin is over here. He serves as bond counsel. He's responsible for preparing and writing all the bond documents, all the resolutions to that. And most importantly, he makes the determination that they are tax-exempt financing. Then finally, Michael Baldwin from Jeffries, who's been selected as the lead underwriter. And of course, the underwriters are the people who market the bonds. And then, as you just saw, who entered shortly thereafter, shortly. Short time ago, is Justin Vaskey. They're available to answer council's questions. To set the table, I wanna discuss the debt service outlook for um, non-advalorem. I'm gonna start at the end. And within the staff report for the bonds in item number sixty three, I do believe, there's an exhibit B in the staff report. I wanna start there. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so again, we presented this to you. Councilwoman Murtaugh recommended we provide that, so thank you for the recommendation. And you can see twenty five, twenty six through twenty nine, where the general fund is with the debt service. Peaking out about thirty million dollars in twenty twenty nine. But beyond twenty twenty nine, starting in twenty thirty. The general fund's debt service goes down to about thirteen point four million dollars. And so I understand those bar charts are kinda difficult to read, but this, when we say we got capacity in the future to issue. Um, non-advalorem debt, that's what we're really talking about, is our ability to issue beyond that. And out through twenty fifty one, which is where we are terminating the the series twenty twenty one bonds. And where currently, based on the structure, we will pay off this this bond issue in twenty fifty one. So any questions about the projected um, use of general fund revenues to pay the debt service going out further?
Mr. Chair. Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, this is just a statement, not a question. Um, I I appreciate the transparency that you all have provided in the last few weeks, but. Um, in in the past, the the different uh, sets of debt were presented separately. And now we know the total debt, which includes this extra seventy million, is one point six two billion. And the total revenues of the city, uh, be, the year before I started, were like eight hundred and fifty million. And although the the um, consultants may say, we have debt capacity, we keep going up. The question is, if I can have five credit cards. I- isn't it enough to max it, max out two of them? And so um, why should I take out three more? And so I have concerns, plus the the cost of interest going into the future. And as you said yesterday, the cost of interest is. Is uh, not a hundred percent of principal now. It's maybe like eighty or something like that, which is a a great savings. Uh, but but still, and the cost of interest is a lot. If you spend a hundred million and you get eighty million in interest, that's still money that we could have spent on something else. Um, I have a, I have a question for you real fast on it, on procedure here. It, um, is it possible, this? This resolution, or at least in the document, it says that we are confirming the the new items, and then we're putting them. Into a pool with the old items. Um, but then it also says that we're reaffirming the old items. I would like to, I'm okay voting. To add the new items to the, to the pool of the old items, but I don't wanna reconfirm the old items. Is that possible to do that?
I mean, you, if upon a motion to city council, Steve Miller, we can probably do that.
I mean, if the, if that pool exists already, I, and I'm, I'm happy to make that motion. But also, can I, can I ask a couple of other questions real fast, or you just wanna stop here? Um.
Um, can we, can we get some clarification on what you just said? So what what are the implications of if Councilman Carlson were to make that motion, what would be the implications of that? Yes, please.
Can I have the presentation, please? Presentation one.
Yeah, apologies for jumping ahead.
No problem, sir. Okay, I always gotta start it. Thank council. Um, seven credit rating agencies upgrade since twenty nineteen, so thank you for your continued support. Specifically, the non-advalorem, you see Moody's AA one, which is the second highest, and triple As from Fitch and S and P. Debt decision points, ag- again, I was trying to answer some comments on the May eighth evening council meeting. You can see that council has adopted a five-year CIP in September of twenty twenty four. The first year of the CIP is within the twenty twenty five budget, and years four through five is out in the future. You did that during the budget adoption. We bring you financial resolutions throughout the year. This reimbursement resolution authorizes the city to expand internal funds prior to borrowing, and that's what. The item number sixty three is the bond resolution authorizing, not chasing seventy million dollars. Basically allows the city to reimburse ourselves. City council approves all contracts, land acquisition, can, design, can, design contracts, construction contracts. And every time we bring an item to city council, we identify the funding source on the agenda item. Benefits of the reimbursement resolution. Preserves options for the city in respect how capital projects will be funded. Um, allows us to start projects when, before we have the money. And this is where I think your question is, this is, these are the projects we approved in twenty, council approved in twenty twenty two. And that what we're, what we're recommending is we bring these eighty, eighty million dollars worth of projects. Into the fifty million dollar projects that council approved in twenty twenty four. Keep them standalone in that we, we just adopted and passed a a reimbursement resolution with these. Five, ten projects. Is that what you, what your motion or question is?
Yeah, I think you, you said yesterday, for simplicity's sake, it's good to have them all in one bucket. And can I just make a motion to add these ten to the other list without saying we reaffirm the, because we've already approved the other list? I know it's, it's, it sounds like.
I'll let Steve answer that.
Yeah, uh, for the record, Steve Miller with Neighbors Giblin and Nickerson Bond Counsel to the city. I think uh, the reason administration wanted to do the amendment and bring them all together were twofold. One, administratively, because of the different resolutions with the different projects, they wanted them all in one reimbursement resolution for administrative ease. Um, the other reason, though, Mike, was I understand, is some of those projects, because they were approved a while ago in the reimbursement resolution. The the costs of some of those projects have gone up. And under the treasury regulation rules. You know, these reimbursement resolutions are supposed to have maximum amounts for the projects. You're not supposed to go above those when you actually issue the bond. So. When uh, budget went back and looked at all of these projects, the originals and the additional, they came up with the two hundred and thirty million that that should cover. All of these projects as a not-to-exceed amount, so we wanted to keep those there. If we leave, if we leave the two resolutions alone with the eighty and the fifty. Uh, and it turns out at the time, if the council decides to. and it turns out at the time, if the council decides to approve a bond issuance for any of those prior projects, and it's going to take us more principal amount of bonds to accomplish those, then we violated the reimbursement resolution.
Can you show us the chart about the existing projects that were previously approved? Can you just show us the chart of how much each of them has gone up in price then?
I don't have that information. Can you put the... I don't know what the cost increases are having. I can only go back and tell you what we currently have budgeted in those projects.
So the overall budget's going... You know, the problem with this, as we always, we've said several times, years ago, when I first started, folks would say, "Oh, just approve the CIP. You'll have several more bites at it." And then when it came back six months later, people would say, "Well, you already approved it once," or "You already approved it twice." And we're already down the road doing it. And so, I'm starting to ask a lot more questions at this stage. And I don't want to... For example, I don't want to vote for anything for Hannah Avenue. And if there's a cost increase, one of the documents I saw, 10 or something million dollars is the cost of that.
$8.1 million.
How much?
In the bond resolution, we're issuing bonds for about 8.1, 8.2.
And that's an increase in cost, so now it's not...
It's two areas. $4 million for increased cost, and then we also added solar panels to that. So again, that was council...
That was in the 121 that we...
Not the solar panels. No, sir, it was not.
So that means that the total now is like 129?
Yes, sir, about there.
Okay.
Councilwoman Herter?
I honestly think this would be easier if we approved the bond issuance first and then go back and look at what we're being asked to move into it. Because I'm concerned about the stuff that we're being asked to move into future reimbursement. Because you are exactly right. This is one of those stopping points where we can postpone some of this stuff. So the bond, the bond issuance is what they really need us to do today.
Yes, we do definitely want to do that.
That's 1,000% what needs to be done, because we've got to get those bonds out. And that's money that's already been spent. So that, to me, I would prefer to approve 63 first, get it out of the way, and then come back and look at 62 and really talk about what we are authorizing. Because this is that point in this line in the sand where we're saying, "We are going to spend this kind of money on these projects."
I just... I mean, if that's council's will, then that's fine. I just want to make sure that you know that all these projects are in the adopted CIP. We're not bringing in new projects.
Yes, I understand that. But it is council's decision about how far we're willing to go in those plans. So just because it's in the CIP doesn't mean we have to approve it right now. And that's what's always brought to us, is, "Well, it's already in the CIP. You already said we would do it." And then it comes to us, and it's more expensive than we want it to be, or it's something, and then you say, "Well, oh, well, you know, you already approved it." And then you say, "But you're going to get more bites at the apple." This is a bite at the apple. And so, I would... Personally, I would like to approve 63 and then come back and talk about some of the reimbursements that... Or some of the money that you want us to put into this new reimbursement bucket, because I'm not comfortable with all of it.
I'll second. I have a question, just clarification of something Councilwoman Herter said. The $70 million that's included in this item 63, is that already money that has been spent?
About 60 to 70% has already been spent.
Okay.
And the thing about the $70 million is we've entered into contracts either for design... I hate to bring this up, but like Fire Station 24, we're paying $1.8 million for the design. That's part of the bond issue that we're talking about. East Tampa, we've spent about $25 million over the $38 million. So we're just trying to make us hope we're not borrowing any money to take the next step in the projects.
Councilman Carlson? Yeah, just to finish on what I was asking a minute ago, maybe I missed a meeting or something, but has City Council specifically approved the increase in cost of 8.175 million on Hannah Avenue? When was that?
We did that a couple of times.
Because I remember going up to 121, but I don't remember. And that, part of that, that was when Dingfeller was still here, was about the solar panels on, suddenly...
Yeah, but we haven't paid for that yet. They bonded for the initial 120, and then that was at the point that they... The things that we added, they couldn't add to that bond and had to add separately.
But separate from the bonding, just the approval of the cost overage?
Yes, sir. Ms. Colina came back twice. And trust me, it was very painful on staff to have to come back on Hannah Avenue. So we do remember that. So she did come back twice. One was for an inflationary increase, and the other one was for, I think, the majority of the increase had to do with the solar panels, sir.
Yeah, I just, you know, I said before I was going to most likely vote against any new bonding, and I realize for Michael Bishop that we approved versions of this in the past. But it's only been the last month that I got confirmed, because it was presented in different buckets. The total debt is 1.62 billion, and that concerns me. And I think we need to have a larger discussion about how our money's being spent. We had... I was at a Davis Island Civic Association meeting last night with about... Two nights ago with about 70 people, and that the stormwater department's saying they can't even afford more than two trucks. And the thing that they... Spider they use to clean out the ditches is broken sometimes, and they can't afford another one. And yet, we're going another $8 million over on Hannah Avenue and all these other things. These may have been approved sometime when I was not here, but I don't want to in any way approve any new debt and this. And just for the mayor's people to know, during the last campaign, she raised money to run ads against me that said that I didn't support certain things that were in the budget, because I voted against the entire budget, because she refused to raise the budget for road repair and claimed that I didn't vote for this and that, because in the whole... I don't care those ads didn't work. So you guys can create whatever mailers you want, but I'm not voting for your overages and your debt. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Perry, do you have any further presentation?
I mean, that's item number 62. I can... If you want me to give the presentation of the bonds, so I can go ahead and go right into that.
I would appreciate finishing 63, because I think 62 is a longer conversation that if we wanted to continue the conversation, we could. But 63 has to get done. And that's money we've already spent. Regardless of how I feel about it, it's already been spent.
Second. Go forth and conquer.
Okay. Presentation number two, please.
We have a new orb.
When the moon is in the seventh sky.
You must be seeing something I'm not.
And Jupiter aligns.
On our screen, we see this giant red and yellow orb.
Very stark trackish.
Yes. Yeah. Did Chief Tripp's project manager have a shirt on with Star Wars characters on it? Did I see that, right?
Okay, we're ready to go. Let's go.
Okay. Just to repeat, thank you very much. These are the projects we're issuing the bonds for in the 2025 Series Non-Advalorem. Again, these are for contracts that have been authorized by City Council and we're just reimbursing the city for monies already expended. Any questions on the projects?
Just a quick question. The Lower Peninsula Watershed Park, is that the same thing as the MacDill 48?
I do believe so, but don't quote me on that. I know in that project, there was a parks component, and I do believe so.
People, staff members behind you are saying yes. So yes.
Does anybody have any questions on this Series 2025, the non-advalorem revenue bonds? I see Carlson's light and Miranda's lighter. Is that just a mistake?
Yeah.
Try it. Okay, anything else?
If that's all you need from the presentation, then that concludes my presentation.
Okay.
Say one thing.
Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, just to be clear, what I was saying a little while ago is not directed at you. And I appreciate all the help that you've given in transparency toward all the numbers.
I understand. There's nothing personal here.
Okay. So can we do this in chronological order? Can we get a resolution for...
Yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. Councilwoman Herter?
I'll move the resolution for item number 63, file number F2514872.
Do we have to do 62 first?
No. It's fine. Second.
So we have a motion to move item 63 and a second from Councilwoman Herter, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. Roll call vote, please.
Carlson?
No.
Miranda?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Herter?
Yes.
Henderson?
Yes.
Vera?
Yes.
And Clint Dinnan?
No.
Motion carried with Carlson and Clint Dinnan voting no.
Okay. And item number 62.
So the thing that I don't remember from your presentation that you shared with me yesterday is that the item 62, do you have a similar breakdown, just like this, that you shared for 63 in the bonding that you can share with us today? Because all I saw before was just a list of the projects, but not the amounts.
We can provide that the next time we come back to council.
Okay, then, honestly, I'm not comfortable moving a resolution... Personally, this might be different. I'm not comfortable moving a resolution without knowing the exact items and the exact amount of money that we are talking about. Because this is that line in the sand where we can say what we do and don't want to fund going forward. So I won't approve...
If I may, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Let's put it on the Elmo. I did get this before I left. I apologize. So we're adding another $105 million to the reimbursement resolution. Fire Station 6, and this allows us to now go into design and construction on the projects. Of course, Fire Station 6 is the key to Fire Station number nine and 10. The West River Walk, Hannah Avenue Mobility, and then you've got five transportation projects on the right side.
From my understanding, Fire Station 6 is not the key to nine and 10. It's the maintenance...
I apologize.
It's... Yeah, and so that's not on here. So again, I don't know why we're putting in money to do plans for Station nine and 10 when we don't even have land positive yet for our fleet and supply. That's what concerns me about this, because then we can't do anything with this money, at least for the next two years. And then you'll say, "Well, we have this money already, so let's just spend it here." And I'm not comfortable with either Station nine or 10.
You want to strike it?
I'm just speaking in that... I mean, and I don't know if Chief Tripp is around, but from my understanding, nine and 10 cannot move forward. I don't think she's still online, but I don't... From my understanding, nine and 10 cannot move forward until fleet and supply are done and that they move in.
But you can start the design.
Yeah, but the design is not going to be $21 or $19 million. So I believe that we could reduce that. And so I'd like to see what just the cost for just the design of nine, 10, and 6 would be, because we cannot start any of that until we can... We can't expand nine until fleet and supply is completely out. And if the timeline is telling us, can you move that down a little bit? We can't see it.
Yes.
Thanks. And I have spoken to you, and I have not talked to my colleagues about this, obviously, because we can't speak when we're not outside of here. But for the West River Walk money, the Unite Ashley project, my... What I would like to see with Unite Ashley is... And I know we're not talking about this till, I think, next week. But what I would like to do with Unite Ashley is to have the downtown CRA fund all of it, of the extra money, the 17 million instead of just the 10. And then there's some bridge money. It's about 4.9 million. And I wanted to take that and put that to pay down the West River Walk that we've already agreed to. Which, by the way, I just found out, we're not getting protected bikeway the whole way. Some of it, you're going to be on Rome Avenue without any protection. That is not where I would want a child. I feel even more vindicated that I didn't support that project, but it is not going to be accessible for the majority of the public, and I'm really upset to have found that out. Even more so, because I decided to take Councilwoman Henderson's approach and say, "It's done. I'm going to dive in and learn about it." And what I learned is that it's not protected. It's not going to be protected all the way. People are going to be biking on paint, and that is not okay for the account of money that we're spending. But either way, if we can move that 4.9 million to the West River Walk, then that's only $12 million that we have to fund. So there is movement we can make. And so I'm very uncomfortable with moving this kind of money forward.
Mr. Perry, is this resolution something that we can continue or would accrete?
We can continue it, sir.
So how about... I'd like to entertain a motion to continue this. Can somebody come up with a...
Yeah, I want... But can I just talk about that idea first before... So the only thing is, we have... It's coming up in the CRA next week to talk about the Ashley-Unite. Then it's supposed to come in front of us right after that. The Ashley-Unite is coming up June 26th. So I would say that we could talk about this sometime in July.
If I may, do we want to make this a discussion item in the budget workshops in August?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's probably not a bad idea. Again, the only thing I would ask is that if we continued this to the special call workshop on... That's already been identified for the capital budget, would it be appropriate to put this under capital budget discussion? To me, it would be, because this is all capital projects.
It would be part of the discussion. It can be, and I know we'll be discussing it.
That would be August 4th. We've already approved that date for the special call at 9:00 AM. And my only request would be to bring the listed items, again, the amounts of money that it would cost the fire stations to be design-only.
Okay.
And then if we were to change and to make those changes with the moving the Ashley-Unite money, that that would be, whatever changes council made, that that would be brought then.
And hopefully, council would have taken a motion on that already.
Yeah, because we will in June and July. Or I'm sorry, June and June.
No, he's going to bring it up. Yes, fine. We have an issue.
Councilwoman Henderson?
Do I have a second?
We have a motion from Councilwoman Herter, a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. Discussion. Councilwoman Henderson?
The issue with our August 4th date, which I discovered last night, is that we have a heartboard meeting on August 4th. So I was going to bring it up under new business, but since you're saying that now...
The resolution that we're going to propose, moving that to a start time of 1:00 PM.
That was what the resolution was?
That was what I was going to bring up.
Well, how about this? Can I just make the motion to travel with the special call work, capital budget workshop, whatever that might be?
Period, yeah.
Does that work for everyone?
Yeah, 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 that's fine.
Are we willing to talk about that then?
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilman Carlson?
Yeah, two things related to this. When it comes back for a vote, I really would like to go line by line, because I'm not voting for the West River Walk. The people across the city who got flooded want us to prioritize spending money to clean out their ditches and other things that will prevent flooding. And so, I'm not going to vote on that. If it's possible to go line by line, I'll vote for the ones that I don't object to or that my constituents don't object to. But if it's all in one, then I have to vote no if it's like that. The other thing is, how can we guarantee, now that we've just approved this bondage issuance, how can we guarantee that the administration can't move something around in the interim and use it?
One is airbarred.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Can you answer that question?
Well, the part of the resolution that I think you... On the bond resolution is specifically addressed and identifies the projects in Appendix A of the bond resolution.
That would require another resolution to move that money from council.
Steve?
So my last question is, and there are multiple numbers here, but the... Okay, if you look at the old total cost, it was 66 million. Now you're adding a big chunk, 103 or whatever it was. But the new bond issuance is 70. Is there a difference? Is there a... If you take 70 minus 66, there's a $4 million difference. Is there some slush fund in there, or is all of that 70 million accounted for if we approve these projects?
As you structure the bond deal, you can either... Bonds can be either sold at a premium, which means under par, at par, or at a discount, which is above par. Again, what drives that is the structure and the market as we entered into that. Typically, we've been extremely lucky that we sell our bonds below par or at premium. But there's been some instances where we've had to go and discount the bonds and issue them below par or above par. So... And of course, then what happens is then you adjust the coupon rate to get the total interest rate. So what the $70 million allows for is the adjustments that are market-driven, and we have to pay bond closing cost to the underwriters, to Steve, to Molly, and to Matt.
So one last question. If there is a delta, you still have to come back to council to allocate it?
If it's above the $70 million, that is the most we can do.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So we have a motion from Councilwoman Herter. Oh, Councilwoman Vera?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Two quick things, which is, I'll vote for this, but in terms of issues with Fire Station nine and different fire stations, obviously I will. And I know everybody will. We should inquire with TFR as well as with Local 754 on the plans for this, because all of us want to make sure we're strong supporters of TFR, that we don't jeopardize any plans or anything. God forbid. In terms of the... I was going to say, since we can't talk about this outside, for the protected bike lanes on the River Walk, Councilwoman Herter, if you ever want to make a motion, including on CRA, to have additional funding for that in any way, I will support it strongly.
I'm not expecting it to be part of... I mean, that is massively... I'm not, I'm not, I'm expecting it to be part of, I mean, that is a massively expensive project. And you're telling me you're not gonna protect people on a bike lane?
We can follow up on that. In other words, I'll, I'll support whatever.
But, uh, I.
Hold on, hold on, one, one at a time. Councilwoman Hurtak.
Sorry, I wanted to let you know that Kelly just whispered in my ear that Chief Trip does agree.
With what?
Um.
Oh, with, no, I'm sorry.
Going line by line, looking, looking at this, to just, um, just being able to put the, the money for the design. Again, we can talk to her about it that, at that point.
We have time now cuz it's gonna move with the capital.
Yes, but, yeah, so I, I, I think that we'll have time to talk to all the people to make sure. Because I agree, I don't wanna be left in the, the position before, but at least if we have money for design. Cuz otherwise, it's just gonna sit there.
I think we've beaten this dead horse. So we have a motion, Councilwoman Hurtak. We have a second from Councilwoman Maniscalco. This is to continue item number sixty-two to the capital budget discussion, uh, and it's gonna move with it if we move the time. Tentatively scheduled for August fourth, time to be determined. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it.
Thank you. I just, I, I just wanted to confirm the bond resolution did get passed.
It did.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, counsel.
You're welcome.
Okay, we are, I believe if I'm correct, we're at item seventy-one now.
Yep.
And it's all about the convention center.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman David Ingram, Executive Director, Tampa Convention Center.
This'll be more pleasant conversation, cuz we all love the convention center.
You know, I always like coming here cuz the, before me, it's always this hot topic. So I just kinda like have that nice little, give you a break in the day.
There you go.
Let's hope so. Um, today, we're here to discuss the market feasibility study per Councilwoman Henderson's request to do a five-minute presentation on the findings. I have Tyler Oathen here from CSL who'll actually give the overview presentation, and after that, we can hear for questions.
Where is he from?
CSL.
What does that mean?
It's conventions.
Sports and leisure.
It's the company that we hired to do.
Oh, okay.
On the motion, it says sports and leisure. The C was actually missing on it, so.
Sounds like a Department of Dillard's. Very good.
Up for a presentation, please?
Well, first of all, thanks for having me, council. It's a pleasure to be here. And it's, it's been exciting to be a part of this, and we'll call it an early, early study into Tampa's convention industry and where things stand today, what is happening around the country in terms of convention centers, what are other communities doing with their investments in their convention centers and convention districts, and what is the perception of Tampa market today from event planners and, and other end users around the country? Uh, this has been about a six-month effort, um, pretty, uh, of research-intensive study tasks, looking at sixteen different facilities nationally, uh, convention centers and convention districts. We've looked at the operations of the convention center, its current event mix, its occupancy levels. Uh, we did a survey of over a hundred event planners, asking them about what's their interest in coming to the Tampa market, uh, what kind of space, how much space, and how many hotel rooms do they need in, in order to accommodate their event? All of this in an effort to determine, are we capturing the market that we can capture, um, and is there opportunity to grow? Tampa's certainly grown over the last ten, fifteen years, and we're the seventeenth largest metro area. And we'll see in a few slides here that our, that our current, uh, facility is, is somewhat undersized. This is a quick look at the number of communities that are either undergoing current expansions or have recently completed expansions, or are planning, uh, major developments or redevelopments at their convention complexes around the country. Uh, just a few to highlight include the Austin Convention Center, Fort Lauderdale, Raleigh. They all range from four hundred million dollar projects in Raleigh for an expansion and a new hotel, to Austin is completely reinventing its building and redeveloping and building an entirely new convention hall with hotels for probably over a billion dollars. Now, this is a spectrum showing just, just the, the various investments that different communities are making. Uh, but it goes to show that this is a moving target, and we're seeing an unprecedented, unprecedented amount of projects happening at the same time in the convention industry following the pandemic now that attendance and event growth has resumed and gone past where it was in twenty nineteen. Uh, just a quick look at where we stand in terms of the event space, our exhibit space. Our exhibit hall, um, is, is among the smallest in, in the peer set. So this peer set are the convention facilities that we often compete with. And if you ask to visit Tampa, we, we lose some business to some of these cities around our region, around the country. And right now, as, as we can see, we're, we're, we're one of the smaller facilities, and a number of these facilities are on that list on the previous page that are planning expansions, that are explaining, that are planning renovations. An even bigger issue.
I'm still looking at it, but that's okay.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's gonna be time for questions at the end. Uh, and, and our bigger challenge actually is, is our ballroom space, our ballroom, so the carpeted multipurpose room, um, is less than half the size of, of a lot of our competitors in San Antonio, in Fort Lauderdale, and Seattle. Uh, event planners today, this is one of the things that they're, they're needing more and more of, is high finish, multipurpose space. A lot of these corporate shows coming from the West Coast and national corporate shows that will call high value, they're coming with, with visitors who, who are high income, they're decision makers, they're gonna spend a lot of money on hotels and restaurants. Um, they're looking particularly for, for these, uh, convention centers that have a large ballroom, large multipurpose hall that can serve a variety of needs, like indoor festivals, like high production general sessions. And right now, we have fairly dated, uh, ballroom space at thirty-six thousand square feet. So we have limitations just as far as size goes. On the other end, we, we have a lot of interest from, from event planners around the country. Eighty-five percent of surveyed event planners, uh, most of whom have not been to Tampa. Uh, eighty-five percent said they, they are interested in coming here in the future. Um, this is actually tied for the highest positive response rate, uh, among other markets. We, and we've done projects in Toronto, in San Antonio, uh, in Phoenix, or, or the same time span, and Tampa's right there, uh, tied, tied with actually Dallas at the top of our, of our survey efforts. And a lot of the comments are that people recognize the, the, the growth that downtown Tampa's undergone. Sparkman and Wharf, the River Walk, uh, Water Street, a lot of people have been here for, for, uh, as attendees at other conventions or they visited. Tampa's on their radars as a place to go to. One of the questions is, can we bring in this business? If we have so much interest, what is our capacity to take on more business? And this is a look at our occupancy levels in our two biggest spaces, the exhibit hall and the ballroom, going back to twenty fourteen. So over the last eleven years, uh, we're starting to exceed seventy percent occupancy, especially in our ballroom. And our exhibit hall is exceeding sixty-five percent in majority of these years. Seventy percent is where we say that, that's maximum practical capacity. When you factor in maintenance days, holidays, the number of days you need between events, and actually, you need five or six days in a row on your calendar to bring in a new convention. By our count, there is really only room for two full-size conventions at the Tampa Convention Center in twenty twenty-four. And those were during, uh, off-season, in, in, in the middle of the summer, where we're not as obviously marketable and appealing at that time of year. So we're really doing what we can on the convention side. We're built out. Um, and when we've asked event planners to talk about their event space needs, those same event planners who were interested in us, this is their data laid out, uh, by ten percentile points, where we have our exhibit space, our ballroom space, our meeting space, and we've shaded in the cells showing how, what percentage of the market can we, can we accommodate. And you can see here, the, the less filled out the row, the bigger the challenge. So the ballroom space that I mentioned, our thirty-six thousand square foot ballroom space, only accommodates half of our interested market. And we oftentimes, as, as part of these projects, recommend to our clients aiming, creating a target of eighty-five to ninety percent market capture. So we're falling short of that in every area, but especially in ballroom space. But the biggest pain point is actually hotel room inventory, and it's committable hotel room inventory. And part of that is being a victim of our own success. We, we, we have a really successful hotel industry in terms of ADR, in terms of occupancy, corporate transient's growing. Um, a lot of the hotels like the JW and the Marriott do their own in-house group business, and their business continues to grow. For the community, it's great, but they can't offer large blocks of rooms, three hundred, two hundred-plus rooms at, at a moment's notice for incoming conventions. So during our peak season, when an event would love to come here in the winter and the early spring, we can only theoretically accommodate thirty percent of the market. Now, we can work around that, and Visit Tampa does all the time, making things work with a number of properties, fifteen properties around the city. But it's not an ideal package for a lot of conventions that are out there. So all of this data, you know, thinking about the positive reception from the event planners and just how short we are in terms of event space and hotel rooms, there, there's reason to believe that, that prioritizing event target, event space and hotel targets, uh, is a real opportunity for Tampa. You know, we've, we've been around for forty years, uh, we've done a lot of convention center expansion studies for those facilities that we, that we showed, uh, on, uh, the previous page. And in a lot of instances, we talk about, you know, these centers really just need to protect their market. They need to expand just to remain competitive. In Tampa's case, you know, there is a huge opportunity to grow into another tier of business and compete with the likes of Nashville, San Antonio, these other destinations that just have bigger buildings. But our destination is just as appealing as, as theirs to event planners. So some of our targets, we do have, are fairly aggressive taking that all into consideration. We're talking about potentially even doubling the exhibit hall, so adding another two hundred thousand square feet, but at least a, another hundred and fifty thousand square feet. A new ballroom, a high-finish multipurpose ballroom, uh, most likely on an upper level of the building, of fifty to sixty thousand square feet. And a new headquarter hotel with at least eight hundred rooms would be ideal for that big, uh, hotel room block problem that I talked about. We need a, a big tower where we can rely on and get three hundred, four hundred or so rooms at a time, uh, for, for visiting conventions. And a number of other targets aren't around there as well, including meeting space, um, additional outdoor space. And then we'd love to see the district being further developed as the, as the building, uh, grows. And with Water Street Phase Two and Three and other plans that have been talked about with, with the River Walk, potential Marina in the future, these are all things that could really support, uh, a successful convention district environment. And with Tampa and what we heard from planners, they love the destination, they love downtown, they love taking the trolley to Ebor, and we actually saw using placer data that half of them are going to Ebor. But what we heard from past clients who, who love Tampa is, they wish there was more to do around the building, more of an environment to, to walk around, uh, the building as well. So there's a lot of things to be excited about in terms of what we heard from the planners. And in future years, thinking about planning out not just a building expansion, but a whole district plan uh, to compete with the likes of the San Antonios, the Austons, the Nashvilles, who are continuing to invest. Um, this was just an excerpt, uh, the draft report we have that's about ninety percent finish is probably over a hundred pages, goes into a bit more detail of possible development scenarios, um, of cost-benefit analyses associated with those scenarios. Uh, but we just wanted to share the key market findings and, and what the opportunities are looking like, just based on the market data.
I think, Councilwoman Maniscalco.
Thank you very much for that presentation. You know, I, um, I use the River Walk a lot, so I'm always walking past the convention center, and there's always something happening. And, and I go into the hotels too, in the surrounding area, either the Hyatt Place across the street, uh, which has a great breakfast buffet, um, or I'll walk down to one of the other, uh, hotels, you know, to get a cup of coffee or whatever it is. They are always full. And, uh, it could be Christmas morning, it could be a regular Monday. But when it comes to the capacity of the convention center, cuz I've been there for large-scale events, and I've been there for the utilization of the smaller ballrooms, um, where, you know, whatever, a company might host some retreat or whatever it is, but there's always something happening there. But at the same time, you know, in comparison to one of the earlier slides, we wanna be like X City. You know, we can do that. And the benefit is, we have a streetcar that connects Ebor City to here. Even without the expansion, which I totally support an expansion going north, we have the connectivity. Cuz you can go, again, from the Hyatt Place or the Hilton, hop on the streetcar, and you're connected all the way. Or you take the River Walk. I've been, uh, to events for, it was like the, the Moose Lodge Association National, Moose or Elks or something like that, and it was, it was huge, you know, going down the River Walk. Uh, or it's a fraternity or sorority, huge amount of people coming down here. So we have that infrastructure, you know? And we've had, uh, expansion of the convention center. But should more hotels come to the area, which I, I hope they will, I think they will, as Water Street expands and whatnot, um, it'll help accommodate the people that are coming to visit here. So they, they may Uber from the airport, and they don't have to rent a car to get around, you know, this core central area. So we, um, I'm, I'm grateful to the people before us that had the convention center built, that supported that convention center being built, and everything that's happened around it because we're in a prime position to be able to compete with those larger cities that you mentioned. And, uh, I think, uh, as more happens, you know, we've seen, you know, the, the further expansion of Water Street is a perfect example. Um, we will be able to accommodate that, that growth. Thanks.
Councilwoman Hurtak.
Thank you, and Route One.
And Route One, they can take the bus, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I hope they're, um, I hope that's being sent as an issue, so, um. So I just, I appreciate the, the snippet that we got. Um, when do you plan, when does, will the report be done?
I think we're looking at, I mean, we're very, very close. Like, it's probably another month.
If that.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, I would definitely love to read it when it's done. I think all of us would, but I definitely want a copy. And I.
I'll also give you some copies so that, uh, you can stay awake.
Oh, no, I love that.
Numbers in there.
I love that type of stuff, though. That's what gives me the real, I mean, you, you kinda gave us the, the highlights, but I'm also really interested in kinda the.
She's a numbers geek.
I am. Um, but definitely, there's so much we can do with the convention center because every time I go there, it doesn't matter what kinda conference or what kind of event, there's just, I hate to say it. There's no better way to say it. There's just a lot of open wasted space that is just, I mean, that's just crying out to be more convention space. And it just, yeah, it just doesn't matter what convention or how many people are in there. There's just so much space that simply can't be used because it's open gathering space. And you can't even, I was at a convention that had music in one of the little spaces, but you couldn't, it couldn't really be very loud because it's hurt. And it was just a, there, there's definite ways, I know, that we can make the convention center better to, to make it. Uh, just even in the footprint that we have. So I'm, I mean, and you know, you already know how I feel about the, um, the cul-de-sac in front of it. So, um, anyway, I'm excited to see more ideas and really dive into the report about what we can do, uh, especially in phases. As you see the budget being what it is, like, what can we do phased-wise would probably be something I would be very interested in. Um, so I, uh, but I, I, again, I, I'm excited about this. I, like you said, we have so much development coming up around us. I really believe that we need to grow and, and improve the convention center with it, and I wanna appreciate both of you for doing that.
Councilwoman Miranda.
When was it, when was it?
Um, part of the challenge that we're having is, we have the facility, uh, facility assessment going on at the same time. So we're trying to put those two reports together to get a consultant to actually create a master plan, which potentially could actually allow you to get what you were asking for.
Oh, okay.
Which is a phased approach to it.
Great.
Um, so give us a little bit more time on that.
Okay.
Again, you'll probably see it at some point in time, you'll see an RFP for us to get a consultant to do a master plan.
Excellent, excellent. So I'll read this with a little bit of a grain of salt, and then the next report, and then the master plan. So that's wonderful news. That's, that's a great, uh, that is a great going ahead because I know the convention center could use some, some major, major reno, but, but how we could do that is.
I disagree.
Is the question. So thank you.
Councilwoman Miranda.
When the convention center was built, it was back in the eighties, right?
Uh, it opened in nineteen ninety, so construction was probably eighty-seven, eighty-eight.
They wouldn't, they didn't have a convention hotel at all. The Marriott was not even here. So we were losing our yankies in it for years, four, five, or six years. And it wasn't until Mayor Greco got the Marriott to come into town. There was nothing there but old buildings that had to be torn down. And we had promised the Marriott that we were tearing down a year or so after they built the hotel, and they did. But the problem, it took two years for us to knock the old buildings down, if I remember talking to Mayor Greco at that time. So from nineteen ninety, we're a B convention, which means you're under two hundred and twenty-some thousand, whatever it is, square foot, if I recall the, the conversation I had about twenty-five years, thirty years ago. And I'm not here to compete with Chicago, with Orlando, and with Las Vegas. You know why? Cuz I can't. It's, it's logical. Yes, you can bring some more hotels in. Yes, you can expand it to some degree. But I'd like to know what size you can expand it to, and what's the benefit and ratio to the expenses to what we have now? Because I, I, you know, the area is congested already enough, even from the traffic coming from the Bay Shore and from Swan and all that area in, the town, and, and it's beautiful drive. And in fact, one of the most beautiful things, and it's very simple, under that bypass that we have from the street, there's a convention center on one side and a parking garage on the other, just those lights around it made it look like you're in heaven sometime. And it really is inexpensive, which you all did there some time back, and it really looks, uh, uh, pleasurable to the eye. The convention center was expanded twice, I believe, one in a Mayor Greco, and once again, I recall. The last one was not too long ago, and they added the pavilion side or whatever it was to the west side.
Call that an addition.
Modification did very well. And it's doing, in my opinion, what Visit Tampa Bay has done is what made it now. The more people come, the more people talk, and more people wanna go where somebody else told them they went to. And, and that's human nature. Uh, you tell me how great it is somewhere, somebody in this council, somebody here listening to us today is gonna try to go there and say, I wonder if it's, I get the same feeling they did. And it's a thing that started with barely nothing, and it's really crawled, and it's really crawled its way to be one of the top areas of that size, as far as residual coming in. And, and, and when Bollywood comes in from India, they have a convention in Tampa, they have their facilities in Tampa, it's just like the award of Hollywood. And it, it's, it means so much to the city nationwide, countryw- And it, it's, it means so much to the city nationwide, countrywide, worldwide, when these people come in. And it helped facilitate, that's why Tampa has, and I'm sure you all know this, last time I looked, we were the number one rated hotel occupancy in the country, eighty-seven point eight percent, I think it was, or something like that. Maybe I'm half a percent off. But it's rated number one over New York, over Chicago, over Philadelphia, over a lot. So when you're rated number one on hotel occupancy, that tells you something is driving it. Now what that is is up to you guys to tell us. And it's not what people think. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I, I just have a couple of points or questions, I don't know which, which is which, but the, so right now with our current configuration, you know, I, I realized intuitively that we're pretty much sold out most of the time for the resources that we currently have. With the, with proposed or perceived additions, is there a actual fiscal return on that investment? I mean, are you, are you able to charge more of a premium? Are, are we basically just getting the same, the same customers? Are you going to get it per square foot for the addition, do you get additional revenue?
Typically, yeah, and then I'll start with, with this, this center, and it is unique where it is running operationally. It's just standalone operations at, at a surplus. It would be expected with an expansion, with modernization, with adding more points of revenue like other buildings have, that revenue and overall surplus would improve. Not, you know, not materially, but we'd at least protect it and grow slightly in terms of revenues versus expenses. The, also the fiscal benefits in terms of tax revenue, the industry profits, we actually talk about in our report, not the economic impact or that are expending, we, we have those numbers as well in our report, but actual estimated profits for businesses are in there as well. We're talking about the real dollars going to the, the people who have business, business in Tampa. That, that's the big return. And, and when we talk about the size increase, we're not necessarily expanding to go after the events that, to his point, to, to Vegas that go to Chicago, we're not going after bigger events, so there's going to be some of that. It's really that looking at your occupancy and looking at what we heard from planners, and there's, there's all the opportunity in the world to host two events, he currently hosts two of those at the same time, concurrent events. You know, it's, it is basically doubling your ability to, to bring in conventions. And a lot of the improvements that we talk about in the report also show this large ballroom that we have, outdoor space, other technology improvements we'd have at the building, we'd be more able to go after corporate events. The, the Salesforce conventions, the, the Microsoft conventions of the world that do go to Miami Beach, you know, we know their event mix. They go to some of the other convention centers around Florida and the southeast. Tampa, we get a little bit less of that, partially because of the, the, the data nature of the building, also because of the size. But we'd expect to be able to pull in an event that's giving, giving us more net revenue on, on a permanent basis.
Do you see a scenario with the expansion that granted now self-sufficiency is, you know, is fluid because it's not necessarily direct revenue, but indirect revenue, that the taxpayers in the, in the city of Tampa wouldn't be burdened because the, the additional tax revenue for bed tax and, you know, associated income coming in would offset whatever the cost of the expenditures of the convention center would be?
We have, and some of those numbers are in the report, and you know, it's, it's honestly where, where things stand in, in the convention industry, and we talked a little bit about it on, on that slide showing the different cities, these are pretty, these, these are costly investments, that's for sure. A lot of these communities are spending half a billion dollars on, on these expansions, on these hotels. In the report, we talk about a number of scenarios where it's not quite that high. But in terms of the return and, and the industry profit that we have, I think we talked about, you know, fourteen million dollars a year in, in extra profit for private businesses, three to four million in fiscal benefits per year. These are numbers you start to put on paper, you start to look at the idea of two hundred, three hundred million dollar investments in, in potentially in the future, in, in just thinking about a return. So as far as getting our return, just, just, you know, profiting as, as a city and, and raising overall the bottom line, you know, maybe we're not quite there, but the, the idea would be bringing in-
Eventually those lines cross somewhere in the future.
Right, right.
Okay, so the, the other aspect is, it's kind of going on Councilwoman Herchak's, is we, as we look at the, some of the dated aspects of the convention center and some in the underutilized space, how it was constructed and atrium space, driveway. And then the problems that we're having, of course, with Franklin, with streets, is there, as, as we look at this as an expansion going across, is there a way to, to resolve some of that pedestrian problem we have by decking it over or, you know, creating access on the other sides of the street so we don't have traffic, pedestrian traffic going back and forth across Franklin Street? Or, I mean, are y'all looking at those type of designs? I know you're, I know the hotel, if we had a hotel, it'd be on the other side for sure, but.
So from that perspective, you're three steps ahead of where we are right now.
Okay.
But yes.
Better than three steps behind, which I usually live.
Any progress is good progress, right?
Yeah.
So at that point in time, yes, we can look at how it is addressed, whether it's vertical transportation, maximizing, you know, I, I always kind of say maximizing the existing parking that we have, how do we get those folks from their parking spots to the center vertically? You can do that, obviously, no secret. If you want to go vertical, it is a cost to it. But there's also the possibility, as we go into those, that third step down the road, having that study from a master plan piece, not from a feasibility study, to redo, whether it's Franklin, maximizing the Dick Greco Plaza, putting potentially a vertical lift there to get people across the street. There's plenty of options, but I'm very methodical and I didn't want to just go, hey, here's the pretty picture, this is where we want to go. And everybody go, that's great, David, but you're not getting two billion dollars out of us.
I, I just don't want to think that we're not going to resolve some of those systemic issues with, because of Harbor Island and-
Sure.
With, if, you know, if we're going to look at expansion, that we need to make sure that we are accommodating and doing whatever we can to make it more pedestrian friendly, that that means doing a kind of like what we have around the Beer Can Building with that elevated park level, you know, the, so egress from, you know, on a second level.
Sure.
Especially being on waterfront, but.
There's options, the one I will say is we already have, we have a five pound bag and we're trying to put ten pounds of potatoes in it at the moment.
Twenty years ago.
And we can make adjustments and we may never get to the two pounds in that bag, we may get to four pounds in that bag with an expansion. But that progress, we'll, we'll always keep that in mind, no matter what we do, about minimizing the experience that's a pedestrian experience as well as a vehicular experience on Franklin.
I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, you're going to have an ally with me as far as, you know, what you're trying to do, but it's got to, it's got to, it has to incorporate some kind of relief for, especially, you know, we're looking at Water Street so pedestrian friendly, we're looking at so many other areas, that particular area is not very pedestrian friendly and, and we have that conflict there, so. And again, with Harbor Island having such a major development there, so if, whatever we do, we have to be very tuned in to making sure that that development really blends in with the future look at the rest of the city of Tampa.
Sure, and I will say the one component is if you do put a hotel on those properties, and I think the last time that we hear, Councilmember Carlson asked about the embassy having another tower that's on the backside. So if you do two, two hotels there, that's an immense savings on vehicular traffic immediately because you have now eight hundred to a thousand rooms already in that location that is connected to the facility, whether it's, you know, again-
That makes sense to me.
High in the sky, whether it's, you know, we go vertical and you're on top of a convention center, we're doing vertical connections via bridges. Those are all those things that can be incorporated, provided we have both the hotel and the convention center.
Yeah, but beyond just the business of the convention center, because you've got so many, you're, you're right there smack on the Riverwalk. You know, you've got, you've got transient traffic going back and forth from the island across to downtown, so, you know, you've got, it's, it's not just you guys living in a bubble, just the convention center business, you have to think about the neighborhood that you're living in. And I think that's what I'm talking about, so if we, if we look at the expansion and the design of this, you'll have an ally with me if you're able to really incorporate this in and make it part of the neighborhood. Anybody else have a question or comment? Thank you so much for your, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, so we are at item seventy-two, I'll hear, this will be fun.
Good afternoon, City Council, UNI Stormwater Engineer Manager or Consultant Applied Sciences is here today to give you a high level overview of the stormwater analysis we did on Davis Islands. Just a quick, a little background. So in May twenty twenty-one, Senator Bill nineteen fifty-four was passed by the legislature. So this is the statewide flooding and sea level rise and resiliency. And the, and also the Florida, resilient Florida program was established in the same year. The goal is really prepare the communities in the state to prepare for increasing flood risks, especially due to the climate change and sea level rise. So over the past four years, the program has supported more than three hundred planning effort across the state. And this is, this study is one of those. So this is really a data collection and assessment effort. And I would say this is a planning of the plannings, setting the foundation for the next step, which is development of the adaption strategy. So with that, I'm handing it over to Applied.
Thank you, Yuan Ilie Raj, Applied Sciences, thank you for the invitation to be here today. We have actually a brief presentation to share with you, kind of go over some of the points that were brought up. So we are going to go through the background, some big, big picture elements about why we did the study, and then some of the findings. So as Yuan mentioned, back in twenty twenty-one, the state of Florida made some resiliency money available for cities and counties and communities throughout the state to, to apply and start looking at their vulnerabilities and resiliency challenges from sea level rise and climate change in general. And the city of Tampa has applied to a number of those grants and successfully got them. So this is one of the ones that, that, that was applied to, and to look specifically at outfalls in, at city of Tampa. The city has about five hundred outfalls throughout the city, and we picked Davis Island as one of the areas to, to actually do the study. So back in twenty nineteen, the Climate Science Advisory Panel, Tampa Bay Area Climate Science Advisory Panel, looked at or projected that it's going to be about point six inches for sea level rise by twenty forty and, and somewhere an average of two feet by twenty seventy in this area, okay? And then by twenty twenty-two, NOAA updated those numbers a little bit higher, and, and by the way, they keep going higher as, as more projection come out of the IPCC. So those numbers were got, they got higher a little bit, and now we're looking closer to zero point eight six, which is closer to ten inches by twenty forty, which is in fifteen years. And then by twenty seventy, about two point six two feet, okay? And that is additive, so we're adding that to what we're calling the still water level. So if you want to think of daydream, like NAVD, we're looking closer to four point six two feet NAVD. And keep that number in mind because most of Davis Island, most of this, the coastline in the city is below that elevation. So again, I mentioned, there's a number of, there's about five hundred outfalls throughout the city, and Davis Island was one of the coastal areas that were identified. It's also identified, by the way, in the Coastal Area Action Plan, it's also identified in the Climate Action Plan that, that the city did, and also in the vulnerability assessment. So on Davis Island, given all the canals and all the coastline, we have about eighty outfalls. And the, the survey company, Surf Tech, was the lead on this project. They went out and they have, you know, they, they went from, from water, from land, using all the technology that they have to figure out what's the most effective way and how many crew members would it take to do the, to do the survey. And they went out and they did a great job. And then, and they looked at some of the low lying areas, for example, this is one of the areas that we had. It was about four, four and a half feet elevation. And Idalia, if you, if you recall, Hurricane Idalia was about four, four and a half feet. And that was more or less the same elevations of flooding that was experienced on the island during that event. Some of the, some of the items that were looked at, or the tools that were looked at to, to deal with this is the tidal gates or backflow preventers. The city already has some of them in place in other, in other parts of the city. This picture is from city of St. Pete with an application in shore acres. Most of the pipes that we, that were found in the city, I mean, in, on Davis Island, were closer to twelve inch and fifteen inch and eighteen inch, which would lend itself to a, to such an application versus a big box culvert, for example. So I mentioned the backflow preventers. We also looked and we made a recommendation to look at the elevation of the roadways. A lot of the roadways are below the four feet that we talked about, some of them are two and a half, some of them are three. So the backflow preventers would work well against rising tides. As the sea level rises, it's going to bypass all of that and soak up the pavement and, and the roads themselves need to be elevated. And that's the same thing that Miami's dealing with, Broward County, coastal communities, other, other places in the city. I'd be more happy to, to discuss that as well. Also ordinances, right? We have ordinances that are needed probably for, to deal with, with seawalls. If the seawall is at four feet in, in a certain spot and then drops to two feet in another one, then that's going to create a vulnerability and then, you know, and the tidal elevations, and let alone hurricanes and other, other major events will go through it. So that's something that we recommend that, that the city can look at. And of course, education and, and explaining the difference between precipitation, flooding versus tidal flooding versus, versus hurricanes. And continued H and H modeling, which the city is continuing with. So that's, that's the high level presentation here, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions?
Sure.
Councilman Madaskalco.
Yes, thank you very much. You know, Davis Islands is interesting because if you look at the history, it's manmade. It was little grassy key and big grassy key, and it was mud dredge from the bottom of the Tampa Bay to fill in, you know, what we have today in the nineteen twenties with the Florida land boom. And it was supposed to be a, a resort community with residential and hotels and whatnot. Having said all that, the island is separated, the islands are separated by canals. And they are not original because of the creation of the airport at the end. I know one of the canals was filled in and closed off to create more land for a runway. Which brings me to this point. Davis Island is one of the most beautiful neighborhoods in Tampa, period. I, if you told me, go pick a house there, there, there's a hundred different houses that I, that I love. But it's also frustrating because of the manmade design and the unnatural habitat. You have the issues with flooding. Because as we've seen in the last hurricanes, which was, was it Helene before with, you know, the storm surge? I mean, that whole island was, was, was flooded and underwater, and I was able to go check it out. I think the next day when the roads were open, you know, just to photograph and document and talk to people, and it was, it was something that I've never experienced before. Now, what you showed me here in regards to how we pump the water out, keep it flowing and whatnot, I mean, we can only, technology can only do so much, because when you have that storm surge, you know, it's going to overwhelm the system. You know, but in the meantime, when it rains, like a, a summer rain, an afternoon rain, the technology that you're showing here will help in keeping the roads passable and, and keeping that water out. But it's, it's a unique and tricky situation because it's, it's, it was manmade, you know? And in that, you know, you have to fight mother nature as best that you can. But your presentation showed me and gave me a better understanding of the technology that is used in keeping that, that area as dry as possible, so thank you very much.
Councilman Carlson.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, kind of set up the genesis of this request, I appreciate you all responding so quickly. Genesis of the request was that Councilmember Clendenon was at a meeting in-
I remember well.
He was, he was in Hyde Park and I, I, he and I can't talk about it, but I had constituents call me because someone asked him about this and asked him why, what he knew about it. And, and we, we didn't have it, now, now we have this. So as things affect our districts, it would be great if, if we got that kind of information. There was, there was a meeting at Davis Islands Civic Association a couple nights ago, UN was there and three other city staff. I want to thank them again. I've been to a lot of meetings with the stormwater staff and they're not easy. And they, folks ask a lot of tough questions, but it's great to have the experts in the room to, to answer questions of the public. Also Debbie Zomerman is here, who's the head of the Davis Island Civic Association. And I'm sure she'll be asking you all some questions and she may ask you all to go present that at some time. My, my final question, this, this kind of came from this discussion the other night. Ben, I think it was said that, that the money for this came from climate change funds, and you, you mentioned- funds, and you you mentioned climate change a couple times in here. When I hear climate change, I'm thinking there are some things happening now, but many of them are happening in the far future. If you were if you were doing a plan or an analysis for current freshwater flooding or for surge now, would what would have been different about this analysis? Had it have been funded just to try to uh affect the um the storms now? The other day, we had, I don't, at one of the TV stations said we had um a couple days ago was the fifth or sixth hundred-year storm within the last year. So since we're getting these heavy storms, um how applicable is this to what we need to do right now?
So um I'll try to be brief in my answer. You the the short answer to your question is yes, we are trying to take that into consideration today as we're doing our studies. And as I mentioned in the in the beginning of the presentation, when we started our study uh in twenty nineteen, the projections for sea level rise were different than the ones that we were had to use in twenty twenty-two. And that's a moving target for us, the whole sea level rise item. So what we're dealing with right now is precipitation flooding, as 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 you alluded to in the beginning, and that is affected by how high the the water is where we are discharged into, and that's the sea level rise issue. Now, the sea level rise issue also comes into play with the king tides that we are experiencing, and everybody that lives on the coastal community will tell you that year after year, those king tides are getting higher and higher, which is where the backflow preventers can help as a Band-Aid in actually dealing with this sunny day flooding that we are uh that we're experiencing in our coastal areas. They're not the solution, but it's just a short-term uh Band-Aid, for for lack of a better word. I have I have a little prototype here with me of of a uh of a backflow preventer. Every uh every stormwater engineer should carry one with them, right? To 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 help with public education. But what happens is that after a while, as the sea level rise arises, it's gonna go around these backflow preventers, it's gonna soak up the ground, and it's gonna force us to raise our roads, which is what's happening right now in Miami Beach. In Miami, billions are being spent on infrastructure, pumps, and other items to protect the area and and raise this and have to deal with with the with the future, right? So we we wanna build these structures for thirty years, lifespan, and if we're gonna build them for this lifespan of thirty years, then we wanna know what they're gonna be servicing in thirty years. So we try to make these projections as much as possible.
Thank you.
Counselor Maniscalco.
Thank you. I think what a lot of folks, and I really appreciate this, I'm glad the study was done. I really love the visuals. I hadn't known about the black backflow protector.
Preventer.
Preventors, thank you. Um so that was really fascinating, so I'm glad you brought one because just the idea of it was just, and I don't know, I mean, I guess you don't know if you don't need to know. Uh so I thought that that was a great um possible solution because that's really, we're not having to dig up, put down, I mean, in terms, so I I guess the question for for me is, what's the cost of putting one of those in? Like, the average cost? What would a timeline, like, do we have a timeline to do this work, or is this just a study and from then the city needs to plan that? But the first one, what about average for a pipe that already exists, everything, you know, normal, what would it cost to put one of those in?
So the city already has about ten of them in place.
Oh.
And and they cost, on average, between about fifty thousand dollars to actually put in place.
Oh, wow, that's, I mean, all things being said, that's pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Um so that's that's interesting. Obviously, the much bigger expense is the road, and then what concerns me about the road, and this is what I've never understood about Miami Beach, is you're elevating the road, but that does not help the land or the people's homes who then are below that elevation. So as the water comes up, that will mess with not only our roads, but does that impact the foundation of homes?
Sort of, but but you're absolutely right, because it's not just the roads, it's the access from, in Miami Beach, there's a lot of businesses on those main roads, so they had to actually put like sump pumps to actually pump the water as it as it rains and keep keep it activated for every single rain event. So it's pretty expensive.
Wow.
It is pretty expensive, and and they're on the forefront of this. So the interesting part about this is that as that project evolved, the design team, the city, everybody involved learned more about, you know, better ways to do this, and it's still evolving right now. There's more, there's actually a new language that came up. We're talking about harmonizing with the with the businesses, harmonizing with everything else, make sure everything fits together. So that's something that that we all need to keep in mind, is that us in general, as humans, we haven't faced this before, we're facing it right now, and we're trying to deal with it with the best that we can. One more, one more point that I would like to make is that we need to keep in mind also with these backflow preventers is that they are preventing the tide from coming back, but in the process, they are making the flood from stormwater a little bit worse.
Yeah.
To get out, because you need what we call a head to actually drive it out.
Yeah.
And most people, you know, forget about that in the process. So uh so we need to also keep that in mind as we are looking at places that don't usually flood from an annual storm or everyday storm, and we're trying to put these flood uh backflow preventers and maybe aggravating a stormwater condition while solving a storm surge condition.
So I have one more question. As you're talking about this, and as you're saying Miami is and Miami Beach specifically are the ones that are truly on the forefront of this, and given that we're not that far away, is there a possibility of either having someone from their stormwater team come and talk to us, or do they already have like videos out? I mean, I'm sure you know them at this point, it's a small group, and in this state that that's dealing with it. Uh I think it would be really interesting for us and the public to sort of learn what Miami Beach has done. Again, sometimes it's better not to be the first, we don't want to ever have to do this, but we're there. So learning from them, and obviously, you're bringing that information here, but just kind of, I I hear what you're saying about the, you know, harmonization, having a hard time visualizing it. So what does that really look like? And I would love if you know of any sort of like YouTube video that you could point us to, or if they have stuff on their websites, or if we could get them to come and and give a presentation. I think that would be incredibly valuable to know exactly what it is, because I, while I hear you, I simply cannot picture it. So I I really want to understand it more as we dive into what we're gonna have to do next. So thank you.
Yeah, so Applied Sciences was actually fortunate to have been involved with the Miami Beach project. We did a lot of the H and H modeling for that project, and we can share with staff and they can share with council some of the information that we've gathered from that project, uh and and we'd be happy to answer questions for you in the future on it if you'd like.
Thank you, I appreciate it. That anything you have that would allow me to visualize it would be awesome.
Counselor Maniscalco.
I'm good, I'm good.
Oh, okay. Your lights on. Counselor Carlson.
Yeah, just one more quick thing. Um we um we here have been talking a lot about freshwater flooding the last few months or last year since the storms, but we haven't talked that much about storm surge, and um at some point, we're, especially for Davis Islands, we're gonna have to talk about that. I know you're talking about what happens when the water hits, but what are solutions to prevent the water from hitting? I I know in areas like Hawaii and Japan that are prone to tsunamis, they put concrete blocks out in the water. This is a different phenomenon, but we can't do that. Um and I don't want to get into any other proposals, but uh other other parts of the world have dealt with this, and I know it's expensive, but to at some point, we we need to address that issue, so I um whoever ends up heading the department, I hope they'll bring you back and talk about it. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. The Netherlands are actually on the forefront of that, given their uh topography and all that, and they have they have a lot of that technology already in place and tested, and lessons learned, what worked, what didn't work for them as well. So that would be something good to look at.
I appreciate the fact that you brought forth the issue with backflow preventers is that it's a double-edged sword, that it 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 may solve one problem but create a whole nother problem, and how often does that problem get created with freshwater flooding? Do we have, you know, I mean, I I live so close but so far from Davis Islands. Do we have a freshwater flooding issue on Davis Islands where actually it's in it's going into homes during rainstorms, like we do in Parkland States and other places? Is it, does Davis Islands have a freshwater flooding problem?
It's, I mean, they obviously had a lot of flooding from Helene.
Well, yeah, that's a storm surge, but I'm saying freshwater.
I think some from Milton they did, but I think compared to other places in the city, I don't think they're.
That's why I think, because they, the canals and everything else, as long as the as long as the stormwater, as seawater doesn't come up, there's plenty of access for the water to flow out of there.
Correct.
Which is different than so many areas, the forest hills and the other areas that we're dealing with, where that are in bowls where the water, the freshwater gets trapped. So I think Davis Island specifically is definitely uh so much more vulnerable because of this saltwater issue with the.
Correct.
King tides, and I mean, I live in the most vulnerable place just about in Tampa, because somebody sneezes on the bay and water comes in our house. I'm at that low point, I'm Bay Shore, right across the way there. So it's, yeah, I I get it, so I I watch it every time and hold my breath. But okay, very good. Anybody have any questions? Thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. I think we're down to one more. Item seventy-four.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I have only five minutes. Um if I may, can I can I make a quick, like, very, very quick motion? Would that be okay?
Is there any objection? Counselor Viera, I recognize that.
Yeah, thank you. It was, I want to specifically request.
You have something going on tonight?
I know, all right. I can't stay up here, trust me. Um I want to specifically request for June twenty-sixth that the um project manager be requested to be here with Chief Tripp to additionally talk about um Fire Station twenty-four. I watched some of the uh February sixth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. I would encourage council members to see it. It begins around eleven-thirty to eleven-forty, that discussion.
I was asking about.
Yeah, oh yeah, oh, I'd watch it, I would watch it. Um it it was indicated that we that the um groundbreaking was gonna be around March of two thousand twenty-six, and then steps were taken or steps were highlighted that would expedite that, including the hiring of the project manager to help expedite the process, um and uh and and different things that all go through there, not to take people's times, but again, things were highlighted to expedite it, and now we're on the other side of that. So I, that's why I think, given that, it's important to have the project manager there.
Yeah, can you see the date and time?
Uh February twenty, February sixth of two thousand twenty-five was the hearing, and it's around eleven-thirty to eleven-forty is when folks were talking about it. So eleven-forty or so, um yeah, so.
So we we have a motion, Counselor Viera, to add a request for the Fire Station twenty-four project manager to attend. Is the project manager on there?
Oh, okay. Then I guess I just wanted to make my finding, so that's it, so disregard.
It literally says.
And project manager?
Fire chief, director, contract admin, and the project manager.
Then.
You can tell my.
Question has been asked and answered.
Objection granted.
Yeah. Counselor Viera, you are excused.
Thank you.
We're moving on to item number seventy-four, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. Dennis Fernandez, Architectural Review and Historic Preservation Manager. I did uh provide, along with Eric Cotton and Keith O'Connor, a memo uh to you that's uh somewhat summarizing the activities related to the parking lot compliance in Ebor City. Uh I wanted to come uh because there's been some activities even since I submitted the um memo. Uh there was a um code hearing yesterday, so some of the numbers are a little bit different than what was submitted in on May twenty-third. So just briefly. Uh to remind you, of course, of the motion that we're here to deal with, I did speak with Keith O'Connor, he wasn't able to attend today. However, uh in summarizing his uh activities with code enforcement, uh he did confirm that uh code enforcement is uh still conducting reoccurring uh inspections of the paid parking lots every two weeks. Um they have not observed observed or had any reports of uh any of the lots being out of compliance with the security requirements of the code. So uh when they're onsite, their inspectors are onsite, the security requirements in twenty-seven, one-seventy-eight are being met. With relation to the enforcement of certificates of appropriateness, uh we began this process with discussion and outreach um uh prior to the code being adopted about two years ago in the summer of twenty twenty-three. Uh we did begin engaging the parking lot owners at that time. At a certain point, uh we turned more to the enforcement process to gain compliance. Uh we opened the twenty-four cases back in April twenty twenty-four. Uh those various cases were heard in July and September of twenty twenty-four. Uh there was twenty cases at that time. Uh three, three were dismissed or complied, uh essentially because the parking lot operator ceased operation of those as paid parking lots, and that was for various reasons, either uh they did not want to bring the lots into compliance, or there was actually a new construction planned for the lots that was gonna negate that use. Um seventeen of those lots were found to be in violation of the uh the requirements for specifications, dimensions, um buffers and whatnot, uh and the enforcement of those started in February twenty twenty-five. Most of those lots received a hundred dollar a day fine. Um of those seventeen lots that have been found in violation at that time, eight, eight lots have subsequently been issued certificates of appropriateness and passed uh inspections. Uh I'll say issued is 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 probably not the most accurate term. Some of them had already been uh received certificates of appropriateness, but over the years, they deviated from what the configuration was on those. So there was an enforcement to get them back to the parameters of the original CA. Uh seven uh essentially returned affidavits that they're not gonna be using the lots for parking anymore, as I just mentioned. Uh two lots remain non-compliant, one's engaged in a process that's scheduled to go to the Barre Latino Commission uh in July. In addition, under uh the code amendments that were uh adopted by council in September of last year and went into effect in October, uh each year on January first, uh the operators are required to submit an annual operation and security plan. Uh this is 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 a new caveat to the code to both assure that the lots annually meet the um dimensional specifications with a certificate of appropriateness and have the appropriate security uh program in place. Uh since that original um initiative this past January, uh twenty-one reports were received by our division. Uh eighteen were determined to be complete, two were determined to incomplete, one was withdrawn. Mainly, that occurs through these affidavits that the individuals determine that they're not gonna utilize that for principal parking any longer. Uh in February, uh there was thirteen citations issued uh for those uh that had still not filed a report or were engaged in a process. Um in March, there was a pre-hearing inspection, at which time eleven of those thirteen failed, two additional filed affidavits uh for non non-use of paid parking. Uh we've had approximately eight uh operators file those affidavits. Just to clarify, a lot can be more than one parcel, so you may have one lot, you know, one operator operating two or three parcels for parking. Uh on May twenty-sixth, there was a final uh pre-hearing inspection, which our inspector goes out and essentially inspects the properties to see if they've gained compliance. In this case, for these reports, it's more of us also engaging with the parking lot operators to see if they're able to submit the report. Um at that time, we did have one that submitted uh another affidavit of that they are not gonna operate paid parking. Uh two remained in violation, and this was yesterday, and yesterday at the code uh hearing, the magistrate found those two um operators and property owners in violation of the code section, and they're being fined a hundred dollars a day. Um so as you see, this has been a very sustained um process. I appreciate uh the efforts of my staff, particularly Heather Bonds, who's here with me, who has been sort of the point person on dealing with a lot of these compliance issues. It's very challenging and time-consuming, and it's gonna be an ongoing effort, uh because this report is due every year. So there's an education process with the parking lot operators and and um uh process parameters that are being established to facilitate, hopefully, easier easier submittal evaluation and determinations for compliance in subsequent years that were engaged in this process. Uh that concludes my summary. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Maniscalco.
Thank you. Um I appreciate the work that your staff has gone into doing this. I know it takes a while to get things started, um but the neighborhood, and quite frankly, when I drive through Ebor, I'm not seeing improved-looking parking lots. They may be complying with the security, but neighborhood said, I'm I'm hearing from neighborhood people that they're only complying with security when they know they're going, they're coming out and inspecting, and for the other nights, they just don't have them. Now, whether or not, I mean, again, this is this is what I'm hearing, I have not seen that for myself, but I have seen that parking lots still don't have what they need to for the site plans they have. lots still don't have what they need to for the site plans they have. I'm wondering, at what point, when we go to the fines, at what point, because a hundred dollars a day is what, three thousand dollars a month? That's not that much money for someone who's making a ton of money off of parking. So I'm curious, at what point that we keep racking up these fines, do we say, okay, you can't rack up fines anymore. We have to do something more serious. Does it get to that point, or do we just keep letting people rack up a hundred days, a hundred, a hundred dollars a day, a hundred dollars a day?
I mean, at this point, I think, you know, because we've been engaged with the fine process for, I guess it's going on eight months now, that in relative terms of being fined is not a long time. We have, you know, properties that get fined longer than that. So there hasn't been a discussion about trying to escalate it beyond the, you know, the code enforcement process that we have in place. I mean, that's a discussion that we can't have, but I think as we are seeing from the numbers, we are gaining compliance through that process. Now, it's not our goal to have individuals cease operating their business.
Of course not.
We want them to gain compliance with the code and what the code requires. I'm not sure of the specific feedback that you're getting from the neighborhood. I'm not, no one has called me to say that.
Okay, well, I will make sure. But we also heard from public comment this morning that Tampa Connect is down.
I wasn't aware of that. I was definitely look into that. I will look into that first thing tomorrow.
I appreciate that. But also, just driving around Ebor, you can see a lot of parking lots whose fences are dilapidated. They're not, they just, I mean, they don't have, they don't have stops like they're supposed to in, for parking spaces. They don't necessarily have to have it paved, but they have to have a delineated place for people to park. So at what point, I mean, other neighborhoods just wouldn't accept that? I thought that was kind of what we were trying to do here, was improve the look of them. Also, you can pass parking lots that, I mean, I have seen that have way more signs than they're allowed to have. So I don't really know how these are considered certificates of appropriateness when, you know, the fence isn't complete, the stops aren't there, there are too many signs. So how, how can they be in compliance if they still have all that stuff?
I mean, I would need to really evaluate, you know, what you're observing with specific situations. You know, my inspector is going out and making sure that they have stops, that they are meeting the requirements. The signage is a little bit of a challenging area because there are state requirements for some types of signs, and we are still kind of coming to terms with how we can balance that. So we're, I think, going to have to sort of have a separate initiative on just signage because it's its own specific issue with parking lots. In addition, you know, we're out implementing the requirements of the code that are in place. So if someone had an existing C.A., they're not going to be required to make some of the enhancements that a new lot are going to have to make with the increased buffering and increased landscaping requirements that we introduced under the code.
But the fencing requirement is still there?
Well, the fencing is a maintenance. That's going to be a reoccurring challenge in Ebor City where, you know, picket fences and cars are, you know, obviously going to interact at some point, and the fence is going to lose. So we're going to have to keep going out and enforcing that constantly as a standard.
Well, I've actually reached out to do a tour of one specific parking lot with you all to talk about these issues. So I look forward to that. But again, thank you. As we keep the attention on this, and as we keep moving forward, I do appreciate your help with it, and I look forward to coming and doing even more.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, well, that concludes the business. Did we do a motion to receive and file the staff reports? I can't remember if we did.
Yes.
We did. Okay, good. That's all right. Okay, so we have concluded business, new business for the day. So let's see. Mr. Carlson, do you have any businesses you'd like to?
Yeah, just a few comments. Number one, Councilmember Hurtig was talking about unprotected bike lanes. I think we ought to, this is not for me to do. You can come up with something. But I think we ought to set some kind of criteria that instead of painting a whole bunch of lanes, we should protect, we should spend the money and protect lanes because the cyclists I know don't want to ride on the painted ones. And so it's, all that's doing is adding to somebody's checklist instead of, instead of really protecting them. But I'll let you do that in a second if you're interested. Also, I showed this chart earlier, the FBI crime statistics. I just want to pass it around and give it to the clerk, but.
Oh, you're not going to go to the machine?
No, I did that earlier. All it shows is that anybody can go to the FBI website and look at the crime stats. The, there was a spike from like two thousand eighteen at two thousand twenty-one, and the good news is that the mayor and team brought that down. So that is a success of the administration. Just some comments, some comments on stormwater. I'm not going to make a motion, but just some comments, as I can't talk to you outside. I mentioned surge just now. A lot of effort has been put into freshwater flooding, but we need to address the surge problem somehow. And, you know, we're getting a new head of stormwater. I hope at some point the administration will separate stormwater from mobility because it really is a full-time job and just stormwater. But we need, when the full-time person is, permanent person is picked, we need to be able to focus on some of that. Remember, Vic, a couple of weeks ago, talked about not having a business plan, not having a plan. What I realized in the Davis Island meeting the other day and listening to folks is that sometimes what's called a plan is a list of projects. And a list of projects says we know is not a plan. And so it's up to us, I think, to try to work with staff, probably offline, to try to rise up to the vision of creating this. And, you know, there's a big public hearing on the Howard Avenue project tonight, which I still think is a waste of money and shouldn't go forward. There's also, in this, there's talk about climate change versus what's happening today, and some of it's tied together, but we need to watch the differences there. If we get a grant to study climate change, that's great, but we also need to look about what's happening now. And that ties into maintenance in the Davis Island meeting. Lots of people were there talking about how there's no maintenance equipment, and the staff talked about how there's no money to buy maintenance equipment. And then last month, I've heard this drumbeat of not having enough money in stormwater. But citizens have gone through the budget on both of the budgets and found what they think is waste. What I expect is going to happen is that when the budget time comes up, the administration is going to ask us for an increase in the stormwater tax. I can still tell you that the public is not in favor of tax increases right now. What we need to do is find efficiencies. We've got sixty-five or eighty-five or whatever million plus interest that's going to be put potentially in this South Tower project. That money could be redirected today to do maintenance throughout the city and protect thousands of houses now instead of helping eleven houses to not get flooded. The last thing I want to bring up, and I don't know how to make a motion on this. A lady sent us an email a little while ago, but also I've been dealing with constituency with this. How, we passed the increase in the sidewalk in Lufi, and folks who have been in the process of trying to rebuild their homes from the hurricanes, some of them were delayed by contractors, some of them were delayed by permitting, but now as they've gone back and they're finally about to get their permits, suddenly they get like twenty-three thousand dollar fees because we've increased this rate. I think we need to pass some kind of exception, or at least clarify that there should be some kind of grandfathering from projects that started before we made that decision. And I think staff is looking at that, but maybe I, unless you all have some ideas, I'd just like to make a motion to ask staff to grandfather in any, any projects that are a result of the last year's hurricanes.
Before we vote, I want, you should run that through the legal department so we know the status, so then we can do it. That's only my suggestion.
Yeah, the problem I was looking.
I agree.
And I'm with you. I'm with you, but I think to clear it up, you got to go through the legal department.
I agree. I agree, too. The problem I see is that we have CRA next week, and then the next meeting we have really is the twenty-fourth. And so there are people right now that are trying to rebuild, and they're getting held up, and that's breaking their budget. What do you all recommend?
Ask the legal for one week, see if they can come up with some solution. In one week, I don't think it's going to hurt anything.
I would recommend just talking to them and seeing, like, what you can do, and then ask them what the solution is. If the solution is bringing an ordinance or something like that, then bring that back. But I would absolutely go to them first and see if there are small one-off ways we can fix it.
I've been talking, staff has been making exceptions, and, but I think it's, I'll talk to them again. I don't know how we can do anything quickly, but hopefully, I just wanted to let you all know that I'm working on that, too, because you're going to get calls from people who are being hit by the same thing.
But I've generally found that if I ask staff to write a motion, they will write the right motion. So that helps.
Well, I'm also hoping that they can just pass their own general administrative policy.
Sure, sure. And they may be able to do that.
And maybe that's what they come back to you, and then for us to bless an administrative administration.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think, Councilman Carlson, I said second, and I want to support this. There's one particular case, a couple, they've been trying to rebuild since the hurricane, and this might be the same thing. I don't know.
Yeah.
Because it's not, it's more than one person. And they're getting hit with this additional twenty-something thousand dollar, you know, sidewalk in Lufi and all this. And they're just, they're just trying to rebuild their house, you know? I mean, it's, they've had major destruction, and they're very, I mean, they've been patient. They've been in this process since October, you know? I mean, and I get what you're saying. So it's fair to them that it should be grandfathered and whatnot.
You see, you know, there are real stories. We've all been hearing of it. Michelle Masturio came again this morning. You know, her son is disabled, and she lost use of part of her house. Her son's having surgery. The couple you're talking about, they voluntarily, two years ago, each gave their kidneys to strangers. So they're kidney donors, and now they can't get FEMA to help them. Kathy Castor's office has helped, and they still can't get FEMA help. We're working through other channels now, and now the city, with this new policy we put in place, it's at the breaking point. So I'm hoping we can help people stay in their homes. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hurtig.
Yes. Okay, so the budget meeting that we have on August the fourth, I want to make a motion that we start that special call workshop at one P.M. due to the Hart Board meeting for Councilman Viera and myself.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Henderson, a second from Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hurtig. All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, ayes have it.
Okay, and the other is, I want to make a correction on my part for social action funds. I move to correct the social action funding allocation for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five by replacing the word ministries with the word kids to confirm the five thousand dollar funding designated for cornerstone kids.
Second, second.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Henderson, a second from Councilman Maniscalco. It's kind of like a scribbler's motion, but yes, all those in favor, say aye.
Oh, wait, did I do something wrong?
No, no, it's not substantive. It's just an editorial.
Yeah, they won't fund it without the right proper wording.
All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay. Say nay. The ayes have it.
You hit me in public. Did you see that violation? Okay.
I heard it.
And the other one is just a brief announcement. Darlene and I hosted the HBCU send-off party for kids that graduated this year, headed off to twenty-four different historically black colleges and universities. It is a legacy project of mine, being that there are two women who work in District Five that graduated from HBCUs, and the community just showed so much love in funding this major event, and I just am so grateful that we were able to pull it off. Councilman Viera was able to make it. And I just want to say thank you to the city employees that, you know, supported it, including the Office of Community Engagement, the City of Tampa Black History Committee, the City of Tampa Police Department, Black History Committee, and as well as the Sheriff's Black Community Relations Committee. It's just really important at this time in our community, especially with HBCUs and other universities. But if you're reading the paper today with what happened at the University of Florida are under attack, and it is our responsibility to support kids making decisions regarding the places where they will matriculate for college. So I just wanted to say that publicly so that I can have it on record. Thank you very much.
I apologize for not attending. I was going to go. Had a plumbing issue, and my bedroom flooded and my closet.
No, it's okay. Remember, I asked you all a question months and months ago. Do y'all, do we have to go to everything? And y'all was like, no.
Yeah, but I wanted to be there.
And, 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 no, and that's okay. It's okay. I'm still really proud of it. And it was actually a, it was a party, so there were no dignitaries running their mouths, you know? The kids were dancing and enjoying themselves and eating and taking pictures and, and then individual conversations, you know, saying congratulations and engaging with them. The other thing that was very evident about the party, I will say, is community members like Judge Little and people who graduated from historically black colleges wore their college T-shirts and paraphernalia, and that their parents were not invited, very intentionally. Yeah, one mom was allowed to come only because she went to Tennessee State University. And so, and she represented her school, and her son is on his way to Moore House. But that was very intentional with, you know, them engaging with adults who have graduated from HBCUs so they can see what's possible. So anyway, the pictures are online, and it was a great experience, and I'm just so honored to be able to do something like this that really is a continuation of my role as an educator.
Councilwoman Hurtig.
Thank you. Yes, and it's okay that we all do our thing, so y'all don't come biking with me. That's okay.
But I was kind of jealous, though, when I was at the thing, you invited everybody on that Sunday. I don't have a bike, but I will do it one day.
Excellent, excellent. Well, this, this Sunday, we're going.
I may have to turn around.
This Sunday, we're going down Morgan Street. We're going to look at the double bike lane that will be protected by concrete. And we're also going to ride a little bit of the Selman Greenway, to talk about the new Selman Greenway that's coming, how that's going to fit better because right now it's really hard to bike. But, and I do appreciate people's focus on bike lanes. That's very nice, and I will continue to work on that because it is a personal project. And I think that's great. Like, each of us has an area where we can really work on, and I think it's wonderful how we all support each other with that. It's really nice.
Passion project.
Yeah, but, but, you know, we, we're, this, anyway, this council does.
We're not that bad.
No, we get along really well with this stuff, and I just want to say thank you because I've been on the other side. But this, actually, I have a motion I'd like to have Ms. Kapeski in. As we were talking about the financials for the resolution, so my motion, and I'm going to, and Ms. Kapeski might need to help me with this if I don't get the wording right, but I would motion to make Ms. Kapeski, to ask Ms. Kapeski to work with the financial staff to itemize the reimbursements of the certain costs relating to the acquisition, construction, and equipping of various capital improvements within the city. So what I'm looking for is that list that Mr. Perry talked about, but other things. What are other things that we've encumbered that aren't on that list yet? We really need to be talking about that in terms of the capital projects. If you have more questions, I can talk to you about it, but I thought it would be good for all of us to get that information. And if you have questions for Ms. Kapeski about any of those things, go to her, and she can circulate it among us before it comes to that April fourth.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Hurtig, a second from Councilwoman Miranda. All those in favor, say aye. And nay. The ayes have it.
That's it. Thank you so much.
Councilman Maniscalco.
Yes, sir. I have a motion. So at the May twenty-second workshop, I talked about the asking the Real Estate Department Administration to reach out to the property owner of the property that is adjacent to Woodlawn Cemetery on Boulevard, which has come up in the, in the news. There's a reporter in the room, and I was not able to respond to comment because I didn't have any information. So to clarify, I'd like to make a motion that the Real Estate Department and Administration reach out to the property owner of the property that is adjacent to Woodlawn Cemetery on North Boulevard that has been in the news lately to start a dialogue on how the city could be allowed to utilize ground penetration radar to verify the cost and to partner with the owner to put to rest any concerns regarding lost graves. I would like a written report, June twenty-sixth. I've already spoken to the real estate folks. I don't need an in-person, but just to have information. I know the media has asked. I have not been able to respond because I don't know, but at least to get the conversation going, to see what the situation is, and should there be grades there, individuals there, then we can look at steps forward. there, then we can look at steps forward.
I just want, a second, I want to compliment the motion. What it is, that we don't have the right to go to private property, number one, and you're in the right cat by doing that. Number two, I think that then the burden becomes on whoever owns the property, to get the city out of taking a dialogue. It's they, the seller, and the buyer. We're the ones overlooking like a crow looking around saying, hey, what's going on here? Because it is what it is, and, and I appreciate that. That would clear up if possible, and if he says no, or he says no, I know who owns it, like you do, and if they say no, then right there, there's a question in my mind about you.
Yeah, so this will be a written report, June 26th, and I've already spoken to the.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Henderson.
Miranda.
Miranda, second. Yeah, I just want to make a comment. I really, see, this is proof. Thank you, you know, I know that that is in my district, and it's been on my list of things to try to address. Our place are full, people don't really realize that sometimes. I'm just so thankful that you have taken the lead, because it's been in the back of my head. I responded to one of our constituents about it and shared, you know, that it is private property and that we need an opportunity to hear, you know, what, what is possible. So thank you for doing that, I really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, and it's not about taking the lead, it's a collaborative effort with all of us. Like I said a couple of weeks ago, I want this council to succeed, and we all get bombarded by a lot of requests, and it's about doing the right thing. And it's a, you know, it's about us as a collective body doing the right thing, so.
Yeah, I know, but you know, I mean, we are very, three of us are district-specific, you know, and so, but y'all get to work too. That is fair, you know what I'm saying? It is fair, and we can't talk about it, things publicly, I mean, we can't talk in private about some things, you know, for it to be presented. You know, we can't tell your office what to do. You know, that's what I'm, I'm going to try to say, but I do appreciate it.
How can we tell you what to do?
I don't keep, I don't tell you what to do.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
I have two motions. One, I'd like the clerk to review the whole meeting today so we can hear it again before we leave.
You're not going to get a second.
Transcript.
And secondly, I, I make a motion for staff to come back on July 17th to make a presentation for the honorary street naming for Jay Leonard Levy and George Levy, preferably near Raymond James Stadium, and I made this some time back, and had today's the two weeks, so I can do that today. And preferably, I would think, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, that the perfect place for them would be from the corner of Tampa Bay Boulevard heading west to Dale May.
That's Tom McKeon Boulevard.
Do we have space?
Unfortunately, we don't have space that day, because that's the mayor's.
What's the first day we have space?
That's the mayor's budget.
Is it August?
August. August 7th.
August 7th.
We'll change that, August 7th is fine with me.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilwoman Miranda for August 7th. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Carlson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. And you, you have something you were supposed to do as well, because you had a memo you sent to us for a, a special call workshop for October, September, October. Did you flesh that out for the Public Writing Planning Commission proposals?
We did that.
Did we do it?
At the end of August.
Yeah, we did that.
Oh, shit, okay. I thought that was new business.
Can I make one, one quick comment to Councilwoman Miranda? Sometimes when they do these honorable, honorable naming things, it, it's not permanent. You know, sometimes it's for three or four years or something. Can you please make sure that this one's permanent? I mean, they, they did so much for, for Tampa that we need to make sure that, that they're.
We'll do it, thank you.
Okay, I have just have an informational item. Our next meeting is CRA. After that meeting, we're going to have a photographer here to take the council picture with the proceeding and all, so dress purty.
Did you ask the chair of CRA if that's okay?
Yes.
You did.
Tim did. Tim has your office.
Is it, is it new?
I, well, I, you know, as far as I know, they're just taking a council picture. I guess if you want an individual picture, probably get one. Yeah.
No, no, I, 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 I was like, it determines on how much makeup.
And they were actually going to come today, and I said, you just can't, people want to like, they want, you want to dress the way you want to dress.
I got to put my hair on.
You got, you got to get your hair done.
Is it just this picture up here?
Well, that's what I'm guessing, but I'm guessing if we want to get, you know, a new portrait.
Yeah, the one from either a year ago or two years ago popped up in my time hop a couple of days ago, so it's, it's just sitting here, so they can use it in there.
So I mean, I, again, if you want to have it up there, I'm sure we could get a portrait picture too.
I put our picture out of my accommodations.
Okay, well, I think that's it. It's a motion to receive and file.
Motion to, I.
All right, I'll give it to you, I'll, I'll rescind my motion.
It's okay, you know I like doing that.
I recognize Councilwoman Maniscalco.
I second it then, that's fine.
We have a motion to receive and file for Councilwoman Maniscalco, a second from Councilwoman Henderson. All those in favor, say aye.
Good job today.
Ayes have it. Oh my lord, Guido, this is exhausting.